Okay, good morning Carroll County. I'm Ed Rothstein. It is March 10th. We have a relatively full agenda this morning, so let's get it started. As always, let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and continue with our thoughts and prayers for all those in harm's way, those in blue, red, and green, along with all those in Ukraine. We're up to about 2 million folks that are left their country with what's on their back. And just keep them in our thoughts and prayers as we move forward. Thanks. Okay, as always, we're going to start with prayer to Carroll, and I'm just going to continue, I think, my stream of consciousness about Ukraine and what's going on, continue to keep them, as I say "we," I'm saying "I" am keeping them in my thoughts and prayers. And it's affecting a lot of things that are happening. The other thing I just want to share as far as priority, Carroll, is had a town hall yesterday, very good support from the Sheriff's Department, along with key members of our staff. It really meant a lot, I believe. We had, I don't know, 40, 50 at each session. We talked about developments, we talked about activity happening around South Carroll, getting a pulse on what's happening. Great community input, and I think most of us have that engagement with our community, so I encourage all of us to continue that. So, looking forward to deciphering some of the notes and taking action on them from that meeting. Okay, that's my priority, Carroll, for today. Let's start with Commissioner Frazier. What's on your mind?
Thank you. Had a meeting with the opioid prevention coalition yesterday, I believe it was. We had a DEA agent come and present at the meeting, and I can't tell you his name because, you know.
They'll have to kill you.
Well, I didn't want to go that far, but yeah, I'd have to hurt you a bit. So, anyway, one thing, and what he talked about mostly was counterfeit pills, and how, and he showed some counterfeit pills next to real pills, and actually, the counterfeit pills look better than the real pills. They just, just made a little better because I guess they want to fool them better. I don't know. I don't know, I'm not saying you can detect them that way, but one thing he did mention, that of the counterfeit pills that are tested, that have, that are laced with fentanyl, two out of five of those pills have lethal doses of fentanyl in them. Two out of five. That's an extremely high amount. It really is. And when you're taking counterfeit pill, you have no idea what's in it. It looks like this, it looks like that. You've got no idea. You don't know who made it, you don't know who handled it, you don't have any of those ideas. So, just, just very, very, very dangerous to take anything like that. Unless you get it from a pharmacy, please don't do it.
And isn't fentanyl much cheaper, and that's why they cut it, because they're getting the effects?
Well, it's cheaper and like 100 times more potent.
Right.
Right. And, you know, everyone wants the ultimate high or whatever.
Right.
But it's just, I mean, if you think two out of five of those pills that are laced have a lethal doses in them, I mean, you're just rolling dice like Russian roulette. I just, I'll stop there, but it was, it was very eye-opening. It also shows some emojis that people, that when he texts back and forth what the different emojis actually mean, and I'm not going to go into all of that, but it's just, it was again, eye-opening. There's like a football that means something, and a school bus and this and that. I'm thinking, they're just like harmless emojis, but they're code for this and that. It's, oh my gosh, things that are going on.
Wow.
Also, had two local management board meetings this past week, I think it was. I'm not going to say too much about it because we have Celine and Gabby here, and they can talk all about that stuff, but there was additional money that this local management board might be receiving, hopefully will be receiving, and you guys can talk about how that money's going to be used. I was going to do that, but you're the experts, let you do it. So, add that to your agenda. And then, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I think. Commissioner Wans?
That's good stuff.
I'm going to be brief today because we've got a wild agenda. I want to thank everyone again that participated in History Day at Westminster High School. Shout out to our own Vivian Daly, who was instrumental in coordinating and making that work. I had the opportunity to be a judge for one of the categories, and we have some really incredibly bright young people out there, and that's good. So, just want to shout out to all the kids that were involved in that. Spent the evening last night with Carroll County Public Library. Brad Metzler was here, read most of his books, and man, what a speaker. And he had me in about the first five minutes because he talked about how social media is destroying our country. So, you can, you can rest assured that I came forward in my seat, and that's a guy that, you know, has done a ton of stuff, and for somebody like that on the platform that he's at, traveling around the country, talking about his books and what have you, and what he's done in the past, to bring up a subject like that was just phenomenal. And he got a, he got a rousing ovation from a full house at the Arts Center. So, kudos to Brad Metzler, and kudos to the Carroll County Public Library, and a likely bookstore in Sykesville for bringing him in. They have tremendous authors to come in here, so if you get a chance, you know.
Has he got, had a cable show?
Yes. Yeah. And he does the I Am books. I Am Abraham Lincoln, and I Am George Washington for Youth. So, but that's all secondary to the fact that he said that social media is destroying our country. So, anyway. And spent the afternoon with Mike Fowler yesterday, and a host of other people, testifying on the Highway User Revenue Bill. I know Mike's going to touch on it, but for those that think it's, it is what it is, Carroll County has lost $150 million over the last 10-plus years because of a decision that was made in the General Assembly back in 2007. So, let those numbers sink in for a while. And that's for road repair work and our pavement maintenance program. So, we've lost 150 million. Need me to say that again? So, we're trying to get some of that money back, and that's why we were there yesterday. Prob, not probably, absolutely, in the seven years that I've been down there, the biggest bipartisan showing that I've ever seen. When you've got, you know, Brandon Scott, Johnny O., and Calvin Ball, and the Republican counties standing hand in hand to try to get this money back. Very impressive. So, made a good effort there, and be careful with the storm this weekend. Supposed to get a lot of rain on Saturday.
Right.
So, if you're, if you're short like Weaver, be very careful of water levels. It's all happening.
Okay. Not really sure how to take that one either. Commissioner Weaver?
Okay. I did spend last night with the Board of Ed. It was a very short meeting, 7:30. I was impressed. And
Really?
Yeah. They really
Did somebody pull the fire alarm?
No, right to the point, and covered a lot of the territory in a short period of time. I give them a lot of credit. One thing I've been working on quite a bit is the Veterans Celebration coming up, May 15th, at the Farm Museum out here. I know we're on the agenda later with this, but I want to just thank the committees working on this, to put this whole event together. And this is to get out to all the veterans in Carroll County, to come together for just a Family Day afternoon, Sunday afternoon at the Farm Museum. And I know Commissioner Rothstein's also been working on this very hard to get things put together so that we can have a idea to bring a lot of the younger veterans into the, what's available to them in Carroll County, what services are available to them that they earned, and service organizations. So, this is going to be, I think, a huge event as it's coming together. I do want to mention, the library here has the Adult Battle with Books coming up, I think, next week. And Ted Zaleski has been a really, I guess, a person who is behind a lot of the Battle of the Books. And if you've ever been to one, and you have hundreds of elementary kids on the floor in teams competing to ask, answer questions, it competes with any athletic event out there. It's unbelievable, and they have it all over the county. And this year, the Adult Battle of the Books, and Robert, are you involved in that?
No, I was asked, but I got myself out of it, which was really smart on my part, I think. Because I know, at least I know of two teams from Carroll County. One is, one Ted organized, and another is a competing team, but is from his own budget area, from his own budget bureau. So, several members of the budget staff are, made themselves a team, and then Ted has his team, and I'm sure there are others. So, yeah, I think it'll be a fun evening. And there are two nights of it, you know, the 15th and then the following Tuesday.
Yeah.
What is that, the 23rd?
Yeah, I think so. But Ted's been a champion of this, and really has helped the library system develop it in the school system. It is amazing, and I'm a big proponent of what I see here, to all the kids out and competing, reading these books, and it's great. And just on another note, as you know, we operate as farming enterprises out here, and been pricing things lately. Things are two to three times higher than they were last year. So, what came in last year as, sorry about that, what came in last year as a major price increase is nothing compared to this year. You're seeing this in equipment, you're seeing it in everything. This filters down a year later to the grocery store. And with the price increases where they are and going up like crazy, I mean, I don't know where the end is going to be on all this, but it's going to filter down to the average consumer in nine months or a year from now. So, be very careful, you know, as far as budgeting here. And I think fuel prices, everything we're seeing now is, you know, who would think COVID would be a big issue, but now we're looking at the economy is going to be, I think, a big issue coming up. So, I just make people aware of it. I had to sit down to get crop protected prices, fertilizer prices, and what was $400 last year is $1,000 this year for the same amount. So, that's going to have an impact. Thank you.
Absolutely. I appreciate it. And I think I took a few of your hours from the Board of Education, and we put it into our town hall. Because the afternoon session, I think, lasted, oh, about two hours, and the evening one was two and a half hours. And you trained to standard, not to time, and people were fully engaged the entire time about that town hall. Again, shout out to everyone engaged, involved. We always say it's not a Tuesday and Thursday job, it's a 24/7, and that really showed. So, okay, Commissioner Boucher?
Thank you. And Commissioner Weaver, I noticed my grocery bill increased by 50% just in the last week, so I know everyone else is feeling the same pinch. I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome on all the new county employees. Rebecca Eckert, Office Associate, Wreckin' Parks; Greg Callahan, Truck Driver, Roads and Operations; Pairing Ogdenwald, Planning Intern; Philip Caution-Henshin-Ruther, I know I butchered that name, please apologize to me. It's ADR, he's an ADR practitioner at the Circuit Court; Randy Werheim Jr., Grounds Maintenance Worker in Facilities; Andrew McComber, HVAC Mechanic, Facilities; Kaitlin Buckley, Office Associate, Citizen Services; Kathy Nail Mitchell, Program Aid, Citizen Services; Tasha Weathers, Grant Coordinator, Management and Budget; Garrett Bean, Custodial Specialist, Wreckin' Parks; Randall Stout, Bailiff, Circuit Court; Colby Mummer, Correctional Deputy Detention Center; Kiu Dana, Southern Forensic Investigator, Sheriff's Office; and Kurt Brocanto, Hiring Manager, Sheriff's Office. It's a pleasure to see so many people coming on board. We've had a difficult time with hiring, so seeing all these new hires is wonderful. Also, I take the time to mention the wonderful work of our Sheriff's Department. As people know, there was a murder victim found in my district back in November. They had one arrest, and the Sheriff's Office makes the second arrest in the suspicious death investigation off Flagmarsh Road. The initial arrest in this case was January 24th. They continued the investigation, and a second suspect has been identified. Investigators obtained a warrant, and a 31-year-old male formerly living in Prince George's County, Maryland, was arrested in Columbus, Ohio. They charged her first-degree murder, second-degree murder, manslaughter, and use of firearm in commission of a violent crime or felony. Big shout out to our Sheriff's Department. There are other jurisdictions that would let this go and wouldn't thoroughly investigate it, and I commend them on their service they've done in our community thoroughly looking into this murder, that we will not tolerate this in our community. So, thanks to the Sheriff's Department. And I want to end on a high note. A Big Country Breakfast at the Carroll Career and Technology Center is Saturday 9th at 7:00 a.m. until 11:00 a.m. They will have Sausage, Gravy, and Biscuits, one of my favorites. All of a whole other big buffet menu, adults $12, students seven, six to 12, five, and five and under is free. So, if you get a chance, go out there and support our Career and Technology Center. They do an absolutely wonderful job. And with that, I say thank you very much.
What's the date on that?
It is April 9th.
I've gone here before. Great food.
And if you show up, I'll sit next to you.
Try to make me not, try to make me not come, or what? Come on, Nick.
Okay. Let's get started. Come on up, Mike.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
Things will be a little shorter going forward. Most of the bills have been introduced. It's now gone from a trickle to a real drip. But we've got a month left, and so there's a lot left to be done. Crossovers at the end of the month, that's a very important date. Every bill has to be, if it's going to be passed in the chamber, it needs to be passed and over into the opposite chamber by that date. So, Mr. Zaleski corrected, clarified one of my remarks last week, and I'm glad he did because it's more than nuanced. I mentioned that, talking about the surplus the state has right now, and much of it is one-time money, and he made you aware that actually it's all one-time money. And I'm glad he said that because it is critical. A lot of bills have been introduced this year. It's an election year, of course, so people are introducing bills with price tags on them. And, and many of them are ongoing, price tags. And so, the budget committees have sort of been corralling all of that and trying to get a sense of what is one-time and what is ongoing. So, a lot of the big fiscal note bills are still being debated and not exactly moving quickly. So, redistricting, obviously, the challenges are still underway. There's a, there's a bill that plays into this. I'll talk about in just a moment. As far as the Mako initiatives go, yes, yesterday was, I think, was a very impressive showing for the Highway Revenue Bill. As you said, there were county executives, council members, commissioners, all basically relaying the same theme and how it impacted their operations. And it was a bipartisan witnesses, but the bill is also bipartisan. I think half the Senate is on this bill as sponsor. So, I think our concern is always, will they get whittled down a little bit from the levels at which it is now, but hopefully that won't happen. Hopefully, you'll start to see these transportation dollars come back in and relieve other areas of the budget that are, are very important.
Mike, do you know how our delegation lines up towards this?
I wouldn't say that I know, that I think that at least some of them are on the House bill. Yeah, but I'll feed that back to you.
Okay.
The bill that creates a punishment for threat against public health officers and a hospital staff member, it seemed like people started coming in and wanting to add other roles onto that bill, and I think it's really gummed up the work, so to speak. So nothing has really happened with that bill. The Board of Elections, that's the bill I mentioned earlier, Senate Bill 158 and House Bill 35. So that's the one that initially would codify the 50-50 spending split between the State Board of Elections and local boards of elections. Both those bills have been amended, they're identical now. One thing that's been added is the courts are not able to extend the primary date beyond July 12th, which is, I think, an additional two weeks. So that's in this bill, if it passes, that will be law. The Senate version has passed on the floor. The House version is on the floor today for final passage. We'll see if anybody tries to add any amendments.
If I may ask, I know we used to have primaries in September. What was the legislature's motive for setting this exact date?
Yeah, the earlier date, yeah. I'm not sure, that's been a sort of a national move.
I mean, as far as this July 12th, instead of, I was thinking it would potentially get pushed further back. How did it come up July 12th, do you know?
Yeah, I don't.
Okay.
I don't.
Bit of a mystery why they picked that date.
Yeah. No, I'm not sure what was behind that.
Thank you.
I think the fourth was already taken.
The what?
So I think the fourth was already taken.
Oh.
You know, it could have been an impetus to try to settle this issue as quickly as possible.
Or encourage the courts.
Right.
Gotcha, that makes sense.
Yeah, because the amendment says that the courts cannot extend it. So I think that's probably part of it.
I wonder how the court feels about that.
Probably like everybody else, the General Assembly mandates to do something. The Medical Emergency Assistance Program, the Emergency Service Transporters, again, that hasn't moved yet on either side. The committee hearings have been held, but the bill's not moved. I think that's part of one of those bills that has a fiscal note, so it's being held. Some good news on the PFAS bill, the ban on firefighting foam. So that bill was amended to have MDE buy back any outstanding stocks of firefighting foam that have PFAS. And I think they also amended to recognize that there are a number of flammable liquid tanks around, the large storage tanks, like the natural gas tanks you see, liquefied natural gas tanks, you see in Baltimore, and the oil tanks and such, so, and the airport. I think there are still some carve-outs to be able to use in those areas. And I know, and I think I mentioned this last week, but Mr. Robinson was concerned about turnout gear that includes this and what that may entail. But that simply says now, if it's sold or transferred, there simply has to be a notification that goes along with it, that there is that material in the gear. So the Senate has passed that bill, and the House version is on the floor today, and both bills are identical. Then we come to the big climate bill, which I brought to you early and highlighted some of the aspects of that. So that bill continues to be amended. I mentioned that Senator Pinsky, who's the Chair of that committee, brought the bill forward. It almost passed last week, it got held up at the very end with disagreement between the House and the Senate. So he's taken a lot of committee amendments, and there are floor amendments that will be offered, but it's really his bill, so I think it's going to be up to him as to whether the body accepts any floor amendments. One aspect of the bill that had public works folks concerned was the imposition of California methane emission standards, and how that would impact the landfill. And fortunately, that was stricken from the bill. There's also another idea floated about Oregon standards, which were a little less, but still challenging. So that's been completely stricken from the bill. The electrification of buildings, so there were two main opponents to this bill. The utilities naturally had some issues with it. The effort to try to phase out completely natural gas was an issue, but also moving to complete electrification. And the building industry came in on that one very, very strongly, said it was too much too soon. So that's been amended now, and this mandated electrification of buildings has been stricken. But there are still some building standards that remain, but that very aggressive 2035 date is no longer in play. So that was on the Senate floor yesterday, it's going to be on the Senate floor again today, so we'll see if any more amendments get proposed. I think the number now is up to 10. The Accountability Implementation Board, you'll remember, you agreed last week to weigh in on that. That adds the geographic-based membership to the board. I will say that Delegate Rose mentioned your support specifically in the hearing to ensure that the sponsor knew that you had come in, although it was late, you had still come in and support, so that was, I think that was a good thing. A bill that we had concerns about, and at least the past session, and maybe two sessions, was video cameras in special education rooms in all schools. It looks like a compromise has been reached on that. It will now be a pilot program. They will choose five school systems to apply this to, and there's no, nothing in the bill that gives them, I think, any guidance on what five schools to choose. So it may go to what the special education program is across the state. In each school system, one elementary and one high school will be chosen. The video will be installed in a room that's devoted primarily to special education. It'll be for two years, there'll be a study period, and they'll convene and see how it matches up with any complaints that came in. I think the good thing here is the school system will be reimbursed for any expenses associated with that.
It'll be interesting seeing which five school systems.
Yes, it will.
Yes, it will. Especially as we oppose this type of activity. If they force it down our throats, then it's something the Board of Education and the school system's going to have to deal with, so.
Yeah, and I think that Mako opposed the bill as it was originally written.
Right.
And so I think the funding support is obviously in there to ease the concerns that were expressed, because it was primarily a fiscal issue that reasoned they opposed it. So the inspection of records from body-worn cameras, that prescribes the conditions for the release of camera footage intended to prevent fishing expeditions, that has, I'm pretty sure that's passed the Senate and now is over in the House. Community solar energy, exemption from energy and property taxes, we've talked about that one, too. I'm not sure, do we have community solar in Carroll at the moment?
I don't believe any of it, any is ever been built, but we have an ordinance that would allow it, yeah.
Yeah, and eventually, I'm sure it will come forward. So there are some conditions under which you would be required to exempt from energy and property taxes, and I don't believe you have an energy tax. I think Baltimore City, Montgomery County, Howard County, they have energy taxes, but I don't believe you have an energy tax here. But it would exempt from property taxes where it's installed on a rooftop, parking facility canopy, or ground field. So that's out of the Senate Committee, not to the floor yet, and no movement in the House. And then two bills specific to Carroll, the criminal background check, the Senate version is passed, the House hearing is Friday, and the compensation bill, I believe passed out of the Senate, voted out yesterday, I believe. I think it was part of a consent list, so I've checked in with the committee on that to make sure that was the case. And then the House will hear that one on Friday. And then last, I'm not sure if I mentioned this one, but MML has put a bill forward that authorizes the municipalities with police forces to form their own charging committees and review boards. You'll remember that the police accountability law that was passed last year requires you to form those committees, of which you don't have any guidance yet, but it also would require you to perform that for the municipalities that have police forces. So this bill would authorize the municipalities to do it themselves. And I think there's a lot of agreement on the municipality side. I don't think they, they don't want you in control as much as you don't want to be in control there, so.
Mike, do you think that's going anywhere? I did watch the public hearing, and they made a very persuasive case, but...
They did, but it was hard to judge. There weren't any questions.
No, there were no questions.
So that's, that's hard to judge, but yeah, I'll be asking some questions.
Thank you.
From the Mako folks to see what they think.
That'll be a tough board to fill.
It will, and we're looking at a July 1 deadline, so.
We have a hard enough time filling our boards, commissions now.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the subject matter is challenging.
Yeah, it's a very difficult subject matter.
So that's what's going on today. Will be the hearing again for HUR, and I expect it to be equally persuasive.
Except it's virtual.
Except the charge.
Little different. It was, you know, you certainly can, you can put the teeth into the matter when you're in person down there, there's no question about it, but virtual's like whatever, so.
Yeah, I'm kind of surprised the House has kept virtual. The mask mandates have been lifted in both, in all the buildings down there, and very, I think it was probably roughly 70, 30 people without masks, 70%. So I'm surprised they'll still. Now, question will be, what happens next year? Do we go to full in person? I think there are some folks that like virtual, you know? I would think people that are traveling long distances for a two-minute hearing, it certainly is attractive to be able to just check in virtually, so.
I mean, that's where hybrid comes in.
Yes, they're not capable of doing that now, but will they be able to do it going forward?
Because I know Congress did that for a while, you know? They were doing hybrid, and...
I doubt if they do that, Ed, that's common sense.
It has, it has effects.
There's a benefit to pajamas on the waist down, too.
I almost had, I baited it, come on, man. I'm not going in that trap.
Seriously, hybrid is a common sense way to do it, so provide that opportunity, but...
It is, but again, there are...
Technology that they had 10 years ago.
It, it's not, I mean, it's this, you know?
Mr. Fowler for May, on the community solar bill, it says no House movement, is it, it hasn't got a committee, committee hasn't had a hearing on it?
They've had a hearing.
They had a hearing.
But it's still...
They haven't voted on it?
Haven't voted on it.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else? Mike, I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay, Ms. Celine, why don't you come on up, and let's talk about the FY23 Community Partnership Agreement, CPA application, and acceptance of the award.
Okay. Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Morning.
I am here with Gabby Zelaya, Zelaya, excuse me. She is our Local Management Board Manager. And today, we are coming before you, as you said, to seek approval to submit our FY23 Community Partnership Agreement application and accept the award. Each year, excuse me, we are tasked with the Local Management Board for Children, Youth, and Families submitting an application to, for the Community Partnership Agreement, which is funded by the Maryland Children's Cabinet Interagency Fund. Carroll County's current allocation for fiscal year '23 is $575,348, not including the local care team funding. On January 18th of this year, Carroll County Local Management Board voted to continue prioritizing the same programs from FY22 and FY23. I'm going to turn it over to Gabby, who's going to talk more about those programs and the funding for each program.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
So first, we have allocated $292,833 for the Connecting Youth Program at the Carroll County Youth Service Bureau. This program helps disconnected youth who are age 16 to 24, not in school, not working, and who may be homeless, to engage in education, career, or housing opportunities. So by providing intensive case management and utilizing existing agency partnerships, the Connecting Youth Program encourages self-sufficiency by reducing barriers that prevent these youth from engaging. Since it began in fiscal year '18, over 200 referrals have been made to the program, and over 150 youth have been served. Due to the high demand, a waiting list was implemented for the first time in June 2021.
I apologize, say that last part again?
Sure, so due to the high demand, a waiting list was implemented for the first time in June of 2021.
How many are on that waiting list?
I have to double-check. I know they had gone through, I think everybody who was on the waiting list by the end of quarter two, but they still have a process in place in case it would happen again.
It's horrible.
Yeah, it's, part of the issue was staffing changes and turnover, of course.
Yeah.
That were, and of course, the impact of COVID has increased the disconnected youth intensity.
Are you all looking at ways to minimize that waiting list, or are there ways to minimize that?
Yeah, the program staff, I give them a lot of credit, they did change their referral process. So instead of it going through one person, now there will be two persons, the two people who are able to do that, and they're working on making sure they have enough staff for that program now. And I believe at this point now, they're back to full capacity.
So it's a human resource issue, not a financial issue?
I don't know, I don't think it's a funding issue, I think it was just the bodies in place, you know, the capability of the staff to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Celine, did you want to show?
I was just going to say that all of our agencies that are forward-facing, that use therapists in their programs have had the same thing that you're seeing nationwide is the impact of finding the staff to support in those roles. So they're, they're, they're coming around with those positions, but it's still a challenge to hire.
And I will say they were able to do an internal move with staff, which I thought was very good. So it was someone who's familiar with the kids in the program and familiar with the other staff at the YSB.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. We've also allocated $70,985 for the Wraparound Family Services Program, and Together We Own It. So this program is designed for children and families with complex needs, and they act as a continuum to serve, to support, and to connect those families to resources. A family navigator works with each family to identify their strengths, address their barriers to accessing services, ensure service goals are met, and foster collaboration among partner agencies. Since its inception in February of 2021 through December, 74 unique referrals were received, and a third of those clients had referred themselves, or their family members had referred them to the program, which speaks to the power of the word of mouth. $88,999 are allocated for the Suicide Intervention and Prevention Services Program, also at the CCYSB. This program provides outreach, education, and advocacy related to youth suicide prevention in the community, and also provides suicide interventions for youth in crisis. The accessibility and process of immediate interventions for youth in crisis has been streamlined, and numerous psychoeducational presentations have been provided throughout different sectors of the community through this program. Since it began in FY20, over 215 assessments and consultations have been provided, allowing over 175 youth immediate access to these critical intervention services. We've also allocated $37,422 just for local management board administration. So local management boards across the state are in statute to facilitate local collaboration and strengthen local service delivery to children and families. The Carroll County Local Management Board holds regular board meetings and attends statewide meetings throughout the year, monitors various local programs, and oversees the Carroll County Local Care Team. Other current projects include the ongoing Community Needs Assessment, the upcoming Strategic Community Plan, and the Youth Reach Maryland Youth Homelessness Act. In fiscal year '22 alone, the Carroll County Local Management Board has monitored over $1.5 million between the Board of County Commissioners, the Governor's Office for Crime Prevention, Youth and Victim Services, the Department of Human Services, and the Department of Juvenile Services. Now, this is the piece that Commissioner Frazier had spoken to. There is an additional $85,109, which is allocated for the Carroll County Local Management Board in fiscal year '23, but it is dependent on whether the governor's budget is adopted at the end of the legislative session. So if that were to be adopted and approved, on March 7th, the Carroll County Local Management Board voted to fund the following community support activities with this additional funding. The first being $7,500. The first being seven, seven thousand, five hundred dollars allocated to the Boys and Girls Club of Westminster's Social and Emotional Wellness Camp over the summer. So many of the children at the Boys and Girls Club are in need of financial assistance. And with this funding, one hundred of them will receive a deduction in the camp admission cost, allowing them to participate. And the Boys and Girls Club uses HUD's low and moderate income or LMI standards, and also the free and reduced meals or farm data to identify those children. The rest of that funding, which is seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and nine dollars, the board voted to go toward the Trauma Informed and Resilience Oriented Learning Community Initiative. So this is a community-wide initiative where, uh, for a one-year period, the National Council for Mental Wellbeing will provide training and consultation to local agencies to build a trauma-informed, resilience-oriented model, which is replicable, sustainable, and will create lasting change in our community. So the cost for ten agencies to participate will be covered entirely by the Carroll County Local Management Board with this funding, which exponentially increases the number of clients benefiting from agencies' completion of this initiative. Fifty-six thousand, one hundred ninety-two dollars is also being sought specifically for local care team coordination. Now, this is a separate part of our CPA NOFA application, which is why it's not included in the original allocation amount. So the Carroll County Local Care Team is an inter-agency work group that meets with families of children with intensive needs that no single agency can address. And at times, these youth are at risk for out-of-home placement. The group is led by the Local Care Team Coordinator, who is housed within the Carroll County Local Management Board, and together, the Local Care Team member agencies plan and strategize directly with families to connect them with resources and services within the community. For calendar year twenty-twenty-one, the Carroll County Local Care Team reviewed twenty-eight referrals. The average age of these youth was about twelve years old. Thirty-three percent featured discussions related to out-of-home placement, and thirty-two percent had already been reviewed at least one other time by the Local Care Team. And lastly, fifty-three thousand, three hundred fifty dollars of the general fund are recommended in FY twenty-three operating budget, again, for administration. If you have nothing to add, are there any other questions?
I just want to thank you two for bringing this in front of us. I have a, a meeting and a briefing this afternoon with the Board of Education Administrators to review what assets they have for the children, because I think it winds up, that's the initial contact point that sends people to these services, and it's nice to see some of these services available. With that, I move that the Board of Commissioners approve the submission of the FY twenty-three Community Partnership Agreement and accept the award.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and second. Question is, the fifty-three thousand, that is the only funds that are being requested from the county?
Correct.
Within this application? I don't know when it was, a few months ago, I went over to C C Y S B, and I talked to outsiders. I can't, because the director asked me to do this, and I can't remember if it was for an audit, or was it for one of these programs? Would you, would you know? Again.
The funding that they were seeking?
Yeah.
I, I know that they are doing their, um, the feasibility study.
Maybe that's what it was.
And I know that, uh, we just, that Debbie Standiford had just recently received notification that the, a piece of the funding that they were looking for, for that study.
Yeah.
From C D B G has been approved.
Okay, okay.
So that, that was, um, just this week, that information came through, so that was one piece of that, that allows them to start the process of looking at the expansion of their building, the, the capital project.
Hit the wrong button, sorry.
Anybody want to buy used tires?
No, I'm kidding.
Was there, was there more to it?
So that, that was it. I did also want to just put a plug in for the fact that, um, it's, it's nice to have a Commissioner sitting on our local management board.
Absolutely.
Being assigned as a liaison to that board, um, which we hadn't had in the past, but I think it's very telling, um, as Commissioner Frazier, um, alluded to earlier, that, you know, sitting on that board, there's a lot of discussion and a lot of involvement with the board members who are, who are professionals in all the organizations we partner with, um, to really identify which programs have the need, um, and where the gaps are for these services for these youth where we assign this funding. So it's, it's really a collaborative effort, and Gabby does a great job. Really bringing that all together, because it's, it's a lot of information, and there's a lot of, there's a lot of need.
I, I appreciate you sharing that. Getting our volunteers and our community engaged, having us also engaged on these councils, commissions, and boards is critical, as we can bring it back to understand the, the budget implications and the requirements, and then have the ability to have this conversation. Is this enough? Do we need more? Where else can we get, you know, additional funding? Um, the Aging Disabilities, the Veterans Council, you, you know how I feel about all of these, um, personally, uh, higher engagement, so. There is any more to it?
Yeah, well, like I say, sitting on the board, it just, just so much going on in Carroll County, there really is, and Gabby do a great job of bringing it all together. I mean, you got all these different people representing agencies that really help out, and they really do. And you have to kind of funnel it in together, we're doing this, and I really do appreciate all the work that's being done. It is, it's tremendous amount, and the help that's being provided for people, citizens of Carroll County, it's, it's unbelievable. I mean, we couldn't do it as a government agency, we couldn't do it. You guys do tremendous job, very much appreciated.
Thank you, there's, there's a lot of support from, you know, the sidelines as well, Celine and Cory, of course, although she's in the back there. Um, they've been great support for me, so I really appreciate having them as well. And now with you sitting on, uh, you know, robust discussion was had, and I was glad you were able to see it. So thank you.
Okay, anything else? Okay, I do have a motion, I have a second. Thank you very much, ladies. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? Nothing. Go for it. Okay, Celine, you get to stake around, don't you?
I do.
And you're going to talk to us about the approval to submit the Development Disabilities Administration twenty-twenty-two American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA grant application for the Senior Inclusion Program and acceptance of the award. And we have Ewan Rich, and Gina's probably in the background there if she is.
She's here. So, yeah, so, um, with me today are Gina Valentine, our Bureau Chief in Aging and Disabilities. We also have Rich O'Tone here at the table with us. He is our Community Services Supervisor with the Bureau of Aging and Disabilities. And as you said, we're seeking approval to submit the Developmental Disabilities Administration twenty-twenty-two ARPA grant application for the Senior Inclusion Program and acceptance of the award. We were recently notified that there was some non-competitive funding, uh, that was coming down through the Developmental Disabilities Administration. They were asking for proposals from Title VII providers, um, for this funding. The funding was a formula-based funding, uh, based on previous revenue and a percentage of that revenue in a specific year. Carroll's percentage was fifteen thousand, five hundred and, uh, five hundred dollars that we have as our, uh, award. So we are seeking approval to submit application for this funding to provide, um, support to a transitional data system to track our LTSS, um, data system for our new LTSS model, um, to track attendance and potentially billing in the future for this system, um, with our Senior Inclusion Program. Right now, we're doing kind of pen and paper and spreadsheets to track that, that detail, and moving to a system would significantly, um, impact our efficiencies in our Senior Inclusion Program. So I'm going to turn it over to Rich to talk more about, um, the LTSS transition and this, this funding.
Okay.
Morning.
Good morning.
The, uh, in two thousand fourteen, CMS had passed a, uh, rule that called for all the providers of, um, services to intellectually disabled adults to provide those services in as, as many community settings as possible. Um, and to that end, uh, the Senior Inclusion Program, I, I would say has done a terrific job of, of doing that over the last few years. The pandemic obviously interrupted what we were doing, but we're building that back now, um, to the point where we're able to offer full services to each individual in the program, um, something we weren't able to do even six months ago, so I, I feel good about that. But in order to continue the transition, um, our staff are going to need the opportunity to, um, access online database systems so that they can enter information so that we have it real time, uh, so that we don't have to, uh, go through the paper, pen and paper stuff that they're doing now, and try to, um, call out the information that we need. And, uh, that way we can accurately bill. If we don't accurately bill, um, bills can come back, um, we don't get paid, and it just becomes, you know, an ongoing thing. So this will allow us to, um, be much more accurate, have real-time information, and be able to make adjustments as necessary, uh, so the money is, is, is going to go to good use. And it allows the staff to not, not be worried so much about documentation, but to actually do what we're, we want them to do, which is provide service, direct service.
Okay.
Well, I'll make the motion. The Board of Commissioners approved the submission of the Development Disabilities Administration twenty-twenty-two American Rescue Plan Act grant application for the Senior Inclusion Program and acceptance of the award.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. I feel like with these two actions, we received six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a fifty-three thousand dollar price tag. We're doing pretty well. And, uh, you know, I mean, again, the engagement that you collectively have, uh, with Debbie and seeking these grants, um, definitely doesn't go unnoticed. Sharing the information at the town halls with the community, um, also doesn't go unnoticed, and those senior centers are doing so well now that they've fully opened, um, you know? So really kudos to you and the staff. And again, the commissions. Okay, any further discussion?
Well, that guy investment return, you guys should be brokers.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Nothing. Go for it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That'll be our retirement job.
All right.
Okay, let's talk about financial institution and banking services with Jeb, Jenny Hobbs and I think Mr. Burke, but okay. When, when do we get rid of you?
Now, don't mush him out the door.
This is like one of the last steps right here.
You're on the plank.
Let's just, let's just, let's just go right to the room.
You feel the love? I sure am. All good.
I've never seen him flummox before.
Wow. With that, as mentioned, I'll be transitioning to another role within local government here with Carroll County Public Schools effective about two weeks, so, uh, part of the process has gone through making sure that many of the roles and functions are taken care of. An important one for the county is our various investment and banking relationships and institutions that we deal with. So here this morning to, uh, begin the process of transitioning, uh, many of those accounts. So, um, I guess we'll publicly announce, uh, that the board has placed an enacting capacity in the role of comptroller, Ms. Jennifer Hobbs. Jenny's been, uh, an employee with the county for a long time. I think she's been a, uh, an employee of mine. I've been her supervisor for the better part of the seventeen years in my role as comptroller, and so she's well familiar with the processes that the county, uh, uses in many, many of the operations, and, and applaud the board on, uh, making that move and wish her well in that role. So, uh, with that, I'll turn it over to Jenny, have her walk through. We weren't sure how many we were going to have in the briefing, we've, we've been scrambling to get, I think we're up to about six or so. So, uh, so we'll kind of walk you through. These are, uh, existing relationships with existing, um, banking and financial institutions that we do business with. The purpose here is to, uh, transition the authorized representatives to do business with the county. So with that, I'll let Jenny take it away.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning. Morning.
So Rob kind of introduced why we're here this morning. Uh, I have several resolutions and agreements for you guys to sign or approve. The county maintains multiple banking and financial institution relationships, and of course, with Rob's departure from the county, although he's not going far, so if you see me running across the parking lot real quick, it's just because I have a whole questions, and I'll be back. I'm not leaving you guys. So we're required to update our designated representatives on the deposit accounts in the financial institutions. Uh, there's no change to the banking services, so that'll all remain the same. And Commissioner Ed Rothstein and myself as acting comptroller will be the authorized on the accounts. That's already been approved. In addition, with your approval, we'd like to add, uh, Bobby Jefout, our Investment Officer. She is currently on there, we're just updating the documents. And Kyle Henry, our Financial Analyst, like to have three in our department in case two of us are off or somebody needs to make a quick decision, um, would also become authorized representatives on the counties we have with your approval. So I do have four financial institutions currently that require resolutions. Not sure if you want to go through each one individually, or we, I can mention all four of them, and then you guys can approve in one.
Whatever's the comfort level.
Okay. I do have additional documentation that does not require resolution.
Right.
But it does require the authorized signatures once you guys approve us.
Yep.
Signature. So we have M and T, who we use for our direct deposit services, the county's employees. We have Trulist, which was B B and T, that's our main deposit account. We have M B S, which is Multiwell Securities, that we use as our main platform for investments. And then we also have U B S Financial Service, which is another investment to get a competitive bid when we settle on IPAs. We need to have a competitive bid to show that we are bidding on the best, um, product out there for rates. So those are the four. So on your approval, there's the four that we need to resolution. Approved for.
I'm going to move that the Board of Commissioners adopt a resolution agreement for a deposit account. Second.
Okay, I have a motion.
Okay, I'm not so sure that the motion's correct. It's more than just a deposit account, right?
Right, it's, um, four different.
It has to be changed here, I think.
Yeah, it's actually four different.
And all four.
It's for the four accounts that you mentioned to us.
My specific deposit and for the four accounts amendments.
You need to amend that.
Do you want me to read that?
Don't you say accounts.
Go ahead and do that.
You could say accounts, yeah. Well, it's, they're not all deposits, though.
Okay, okay.
It's the four accounts mentioned during.
Where's a good attorney when you need one right now?
Okay.
So is that all right? Just to lump it together like that?
Yes, these are all documents necessary for the transition from, uh, from Mr. Burke to Ms. Hobbs with regard to our, our accounts.
Commissioner Weaver, what do you want to say?
Exactly what he said. Now that we will take all four accounts into this, uh, resolution agreement, with the deposit account and all four accounts. And make it, Jim, reword it, make it right.
I'll second to reword it agree.
Get my name off the account. That's all right.
He's motivated.
Okay. I have a motion, I believe, and a second.
Sure.
I'm not sure. But I am confident that it will be worded correctly. Isn't that right, Mr. Burke?
This is nothing more than a change of names on the accounts.
Right.
Correct, correct. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Burke, are you going to guarantee us a better working relationship across the street?
Okay, let's talk about.
I'll do everything I can, working with the board.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Approval of FY twenty-two Town-City Agreement with Westminster. Morning, Ted.
Good morning. All right, we have Westminster's Town-City Agreement here for your approval. The amount for FY twenty-two is one million, eighty-two thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. And just to remind you, it gets confusing sometimes, I confused myself just a few minutes ago. The actual check that goes to Westminster, though, is approximately nine hundred thousand dollars. Remember, the towns pay, this came, it came up a little bit earlier today, uh, pay for the salaries of two people that work on water resources, and there's also the portion that each town pays toward our partnership on, uh, stormwater projects. So there's the Town-City amount, we deduct those two things, and then send them the net.
I make the motion, the Board of Commissioners approve FY twenty-two Town-City Agreement with the town of Westminster.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
Told you I'd get you out of here quick, Ted.
I'll be back.
Mr. Burke, Tim, one each.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Let's talk about the noise ordinance repeal and revision.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. In the early 2000s, the Maryland Department of the Environment was kicked out of the noise enforcement business by the state legislature. They, they defunded the program and graciously deferred the responsibility to the local governments. And we have a current noise ordinance, which was adopted in 2005. It was adopted in an environment where there was a spate of ATV complaints. And unfortunately, over the years, it's proven to be unworkable to address some of the things that are happening now. You look at the ordinance, it's rather wordy and voluminous and it, again, seems to be directed towards ATVs and not some other situations that we have now. It requires the use of certified noise meters or decibel meters, which have, are expensive and they must be calibrated each year and maintained and replaced occasionally. And that, that has not happened. So the equipment's not been updated or calibrated and it's currently, the ordinance in its current form has, is not workable. So what we're asking you to do is to repeal the current ordinance and replace it with what I'm going to call the Anne Arundel County Model, which is a legal way of saying, we plagiarized their, their noise ordinance. It's in your packet and you'll notice it's much shorter and I think it's more designed to address the problems that we're having now. First, it would address what is currently the bane of, at least Commissioner Wance's existence at this point, and that is the use of amplified noise or music. And one portion of the ordinance would ban at any time amplified music that is, causes an unreasonable noise in, in a residential neighborhood. So if the windows in Pleasant Valley are rattling at noon, that, that's a problem. If they're not rattling at noon, it shouldn't be considered maybe, it wouldn't be an unreasonable noise. The second part of, does that make sense? A guy could have a backyard party, which at noon, which is to be expected, you know, there's going to be music. If someone can't use their living room because the music is that loud, that, that should be a problem. That would probably, in the sheriff's mind, be considered unreasonable. And he's, we have a representative here that's going to speak to that later. Secondly, it's, that, that addresses the music period. The second addresses the use of other devices, tools.
Cannons.
Cannons, unreal, unreally loud amplified noise. Cannons would be addressed actually in another, in a, in a state law, which we effectively used in that case. That was disturbing the peace. But part two would address unreasonable noises between the hours of 10:00 and 7:00. That would address your leaf blowers, you know, gas-powered leaf blowers at 11 o'clock, amplified music, any other loud noises that would be considered by any reasonable person to be an unreasonable noise. And that would be prohibited between the hours of 10:00 and 7:00. There are exemptions, of course. Being government, of course, we always exempt ourselves from what we're imposing on other people. Also farm equipment, schools, you know, the marching band isn't, you know, can practice. Those are some exemptions that are, that are built into the ordinance. So we think it would work a lot better than the one we have now. I don't anticipate it's going to be anything more than just another tool in the toolbox for the sheriff to, to use, you know, when he goes out and visits people that, that are having these problems. And I have a representative from the sheriff's office, if he would like to comment.
Good morning, Spencer.
Good morning.
How are y'all doing today? We've collaborated.
We know who you are, but could you tell them?
I'm captain of the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you.
We've collaborated a lot with members of your staff over the past couple of months, exercising and completing what I think is, we have a very good drafted document in front of you that we, gives us the ability to enforce, enforce the noise ordinance that, as in the past, that we didn't have the ability to do. We've had great success mediating issues in the community and based off our strategic plan and our model, that's our goal and objective is to serve the community and provide this particular resource to members of the community to rectify their situations. What I think before you is a great bill, a great, or I shouldn't say bill, it's an ordinance. It's a great ordinance that we can collaborate, or collaborate with members of the state's attorney's office as well to complete the mission. And the objective is to serve the needs of the community in a safe and effective way.
And by way of enforcement, it would involve the issues of first-size civil citations by the sheriff's office, which are non-criminal citations, but that there's citations that would be issued. In the event of a prolonged, you know, failure to abide by previous agreements or orders with the sheriff, there would also be the possibility of a criminal citation, a misdemeanor.
We did experience that. I mean, in my 17 years of law enforcement career, I've only experienced one time where we've had to take those actions to that realm where the cannons that were being fired repeatedly in the.
Only in Carroll County.
In the southern end of the county. We actually took criminal action in that behavior. We built a case. We collaborated with the state's attorney's office. We tried to mediate it over a period of time and ended up the subject who was charged in the crime did not want to work with our office. And we've had great success working with members of the community. Commissioner Wance can attest to the Island Green issues that we had early on and we've resolved those issues. But we have another summer season coming up.
Spring's around the corner, right?
It's right around the corner.
This gives you the best tools, like Mr. Burke said, to deescalate situations.
Yes, sir.
And, okay. I mean, that's what it's about. It's not about the citation, it's about the deescalation. It's about getting people seeing common sense, but to.
It's about engaging members of the community.
That's correct.
Get them to meet in the middle.
Exactly.
We've had great, like I can't echo what I've been saying, or we've had great success.
Right.
Just last week, we had a mediated situation where we pulled in all the community members. It was actually on Zoom hybrid platform, but we were able to reconcile the situation just by having people talk. And that's what we're great at. We're great at deescalation.
Yep.
Bringing people together, communicating.
I appreciate that you took the experience with the cannon and recognized there were some holes in the system and should take and address them. I'm really interested in hearing how Commissioner Wance feels about this because he has an ongoing situation in his district. You solve mine, but I want to make sure that this is going to help his district.
Yeah, okay, well, throw the ball at me and I'll try to take a swing at it. We've been working on this for a while and it's not just about a singular venue. I mean, we did have some issues there. We've actually had residents complain about their neighbors.
Me too.
And that's in your district where I knew the gentleman and he called me because he didn't like you, I think.
Probably. I said, you're better off with Commissioner Wance. I think your relationship is pivotal.
The point here is, I think it all does come down, as Captain Ward says, to, to being able to mediate. And that's really what we did at the venue in, in my district. And as a result, they've, they've changed the way in which the setup is and I think the sound's going in a different direction. So I think that's good. I know that there's still some concern out there about decibel levels and, you know, I don't know, I know you did a lot of research on this, Tim, but there are other counties, I think, that still look at decibel levels.
I would say most other counties look at decibel levels.
Right. So then it comes down to, okay, who's going to go out and, you know, sit there and take the decibel levels? And who's going to calibrate the equipment, keep the equipment up to date? I just think this is a better common sense approach to it, to, to eliminate that aspect of it. And if that, if that works, great. I just don't want to get into, to a point here where somebody talks about decibel levels and how that could be, you know, taken to another level. In other words, you know, you get somebody in a court, if somebody gets to the point where they're just absolutely not complying and you got to take them to that level, then what happens?
We'll start an investigation. We'll follow up on the investigation and then we'll charge them criminally.
Okay. But then if they are charged criminally, can they come back and say, well, it's, you know, your word against mine because no one ever took a decibel level out here?
Well, it's, it's based on the totality of the circumstances.
Okay.
And historically, disturbing the peace is based off a continuing course of action.
Mm-hmm. Right.
So as long as we can document, and that's what we exactly did with the case off of, I believe it was off of Route Road in the southern part of the county.
Yeah.
That's exactly what, how we built a ca, it was a month-long investigation. We had to get citizen input and engagement in order to work through it. And we had to collaborate with our partners next door, the state's attorney's office, in order to make it a good, solid case.
I think the bottom line for me is, the most important part of it is the timeline. 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM makes sense. And that, that's what I've always heard from people that have reached out to me. You know, it's, it's, it's 11 o'clock. Good grief, what's going on? So if we can really enforce that 10:00 to 7:00, I think that's the critical part of this. And that's in here. So I, I'm, I'm good with that. Now, there've been some venues that have pushed that limit, you know, with still going on at 10:10 and 10:15 because, you know.
They want the encore.
Whoop, 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 so whatever. But, you know, I think we've got to be mindful and we have got to make sure that that is the, the biggest part of this enforcement. 10:00 PM, you're done. Start the encores at 9:45.
Well, and a lot of us educating the vendors as well, they're having these events.
Right, yeah.
So when they're actually applying for a permit to add on to their facility, provide them with a copy of it and give them our, you know, instructions. It's 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM.
Right.
That's when the event happens and then just cut off.
Yep. And the wedding venues are, you know, we've, we've had a bunch of those, well, a few of those too. And, you know, a lot of it has to do with how Cal, Carroll County sits because, because sound travels through valleys and everything else and it makes it difficult to, to, you know, to mitigate that sound. It really does. So I, I think the biggest part of this is, is the common sense 10:00 to 7:00. So that's where I am with it.
What's the de-escalation part that comes along?
And that too, right. And that too.
Yeah, honestly, I think that's the crux of this, is the ability to de-escalate, to mediate, to have the conversations, not to be tied to decibels.
Right.
I'm on the flip side, as far as the timeline, about the early risers. Those that are, you know, tree cutting and cutting the yards and doing things in their, in their neighborhoods. At 6:30 and not at 7:00. And, you know, somebody's sleeping, you know, that happens. And, I mean, it happens in my neighborhood. Not often, but, and also services come out, I mean, as early as they can to start with the yards. And, you know, we have to be mindful of that. Because you're going to get complaints about that and I'm sure you do. People waking up when they don't want to wake up as early, you know, it's 6:30 because of lawn cutting or tree cutting and other things.
We just fielded a complaint two days ago with that exact scenario. It was a little bit more complicated. But it was as simple as calling the actual provider of the service, providing them with the information regarding the current noise ordinance.
Right.
And once they understood what the current noise ordinance was, they're like, okay, we're here to, your policy and regulations. But I find that a lot of this is about education more so than enforcement.
It, it's, it's definitely communication. And so you've got the commercial groupings and then you've got the individuals. You've got, you know, the neighbors. And, you know, again, want to get an early start on a Saturday morning so they have their full Saturday, so they're getting their yards, you know, cut front and back, starting at 6:30 to whatever, and doing the trimming, all that kind of stuff. Same thing on Sundays. People want to respect Sundays and feel that you shouldn't be doing certain things on Sundays. But there's nothing in here, as there should not be anything in here, about Sundays. You know, we're not going back to the blue laws and dealing with tree cutting and all that kind of services. But that's also something that we just have to be aware of. Respect, communications, de-escalation are all the things that you do so well, you being collective with the department. I think this provides you those tools to do that. So I'm for it. I'm just poking the holes at saying, okay, where, where is it going to lead us with these conversations? So.
Well, and part of that is going to be reeducating the staff.
Right.
And educating them on what we should and shouldn't be doing. And it gives us the power of discretion as well, which is most important in this line of work.
Yeah.
It, it's a shame we have to get to this point, but I do understand your position in this. This gives you ability to enforce some things. And Commissioner Rothstein, you know, if we did from 10:00 PM to sunup, that would change with the days and, you know, the hours and the start of that. Because a lot of, you know, as the days get longer, yeah, people do want to start. And if it's a commercial company, a lot of them shift their hours from 6:00 to whatever. To, you know, they're working in the mornings when it's cool, not when it's so hot in the afternoon. And, you know, I, I don't think it's a lot of those, but occasionally there's some, and I know construction companies say, you know, they have, it costs them a lot of money to have to wait till 7:00 to do things many times here. So I, I just, just a thought to add to this. And Commissioner Wance, you know, I oppose anything that infringes here on individuals, but considering where we are today in society and where it's gone, Tim, this is, I guess, the best ordinance we can have here at this time. And I think we have to get to that point. You might just want to consider that slight change from 10:00 PM to sunup, whatever. That would alter some of that.
Well, it's unfortunate that we need a new noise ordinance, but we do. I, I think we've all received complaints. I have as well. You know, I think this is a, a good ordinance. I guess the arbitrators will be the sheriff's department when they get there to find out. And my question, okay, let's say people are, as a venue, creating noise after 10:00, I call the sheriff's department. By the time the deputy gets out there, it's all over with. What happens in that is, you just make a report and, oh, go ahead. You tell me.
The deputy will respond, obviously, and say he sees people, will contact the vendor, speak to the vendor and say, hey, we got a complaint out here. And then it'll be documented in the CAD record. If we have a continuing course of action and it continues over a period of time, then we'll open up a formal investigation and take whatever the appropriate action is this part. Typically, in these situations, we'll sit down with the vendor or the event organizer prior to getting to that next level and tell them that we have had some community issues and we need to address them. And that typically settles down everyone. But obviously, some people don't want to adhere to the law or listen to us and then we'll take, go to the extreme of.
Because I think that's the biggest complaint I get is the after 10:00 in the venue. That, that could be heard by the residents that are close to it.
And sometimes it comes down to perception as well. So that's another option you have to look at. It might be 10:00. It might be 10:01. A lot, a lot of people are very strict on the guidelines.
And then, yeah, I apologize. I, that's what I was thinking, is you've got rule followers to the, you know, to exactly black and white. And then you've got the, yeah, it's 10-ish or it's 7-ish. So if somebody's cutting their yard at 6:00, 6:30 in the morning, it's a little bit inconvenient for neighbors, but it's not that big of a deal. But then there's others that are like, it's 6:45 or 6:50, you're not supposed to start till 7:00. And I'm calling you in on it. So that's kind of the, just, you know, I, I think, honestly, I, I like this. It gives you the opportunity to mediate, to have the conversations, to do what you do best. So I'm not tied. I, I don't think it's that big of a deal, the 10 to 7. I mean, I just, that, that's what comes to my mind. Because in my community, it's more the early risers than, you know, I don't have the venues, you know, that would allow for late night activities.
And I kind of think the hours of operation was for the specific venues per se, the 10 to 7.
Well, there's two, two parts of it. One of them is, is just if someone has their music turned up so loud, even in the middle of the day, that it's interfering with your, your ability to live inside your house as was described by some earlier incidents in, in, in Pleasant Valley. This would give them the right to go to, to say, hey, you got to turn it down, you know, it's, it's too loud. The other part two is, is the 10 to 7. That's really to address people's ability to sleep and, and maybe their windows aren't rattling, but they can hear deep purple through their, through their window at 11 o'clock. You know, it's, it's to address that situation.
You're dating yourself.
Between the hours of 10 to 7.
I think that clarity in a code is really beneficial for the business community because without it, it creates all the disagreements and arguing back and forth. So I like it. And I bet you in your career as a captain, you never thought you'd have a call about a cannon, did you?
Never in my entire career.
When I originally got that call, I was like, what, what's this all about?
That was an interesting situation.
But it was a learning experience for us. I think it helped be the impetus to put us in this point, I believe.
And it, it taught us how to mature our ordinance and taught us how to experience something new and how to address it to the community. I think overall, the staff, we did a great job collaborating. I think overall the staff, we did a great job collaborating to solve the, the issues you had in your community.
Well, I wanna commend you and all the staff that did that and get us to this point, so thank you.
Thank you.
And that, that was a clear case where the person intended to do this, whereas, you know, the venue owner, oops, I, you know, I accidentally went two minutes over. But anyhow, what we're looking for now is just your permission to put this to a public hearing and you'll be able to hear from members of the public and members of owners of venues and things like that as to what they think of this proposal. And at that point, based upon what you hear, you may wanna, uh, make changes or, or adopt it later, as is, so that's all we're looking for today.
So you need a motion for public, uh, hearing?
Motion for it to proceed to public hearing.
I'll make the motion that the noise, noise ordinance proceeds to public hearing.
Second.
Okay, motion second, any further discussion? Really appreciate the time, Ken, being here. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Okay, can we make sure there's no roof work going on, uh, that day when we're doing the noise? Okay, until I was rudely interrupted, uh, Jack Libber, why don't you come on up? No.
Keep it down.
I apologize. CDL training at Carroll Community College through Workforce Development. Who's coming up here? All of you? Okay. Maureen, Heather.
All-star cast.
If you wanna come up, feel free. Uh, good morning, ladies.
Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Um, as you stated, we are here to request your approval to award a contract to Carroll Community College to provide CDLA training in Carroll County for up to six students in, um, the amount of thirty-one thousand dollars. Um, an additional six students can be added at a cost of thirty-one thousand eight hundred dollars for a total cost of sixty-two thousand eight hundred for twelve students. Funds for the contract are available through the American Rescue Plan Act awarded to Carroll County workforce area. The cost associated with the service is within the allocated budget and no additional funds will be needed. And I'll turn it over to Heather to let you know about this program.
Good morning, commissioners, I think we, um, discussed this at an earlier session that, um, this was one of the rapid trainings that we wanted to do for our citizens and getting them back to work and helping the economy. We typically use Carroll Community College as our vendor for CDL training. However, they in turn use, I believe, um, the Community College of Baltimore County. The training is at Sparrow's Point or they can go to Hagerstown. We wanted to have this opportunity to place the training in the county. So it's, um, an accelerated training, we were able to drop off two weeks, so it's an eight-week program. It's Monday through Friday, eight fifteen to four fifteen. Um, the three classroom, three weeks of classroom training are in our facility across the street at Carroll County Workforce Development. And we are still working, the Community College is trying to find the driving, um, location that they could
That's what I was wondering.
To do this within the county and that is something that they're still diligently working on.
I don't wanna be anywhere near those early drivers.
I thought maybe like the airport or something like that would work.
Runway.
At the airport, there's, you know, yeah, I mean, there's, there's lots of space and we're up in, um, Hampstead around, uh,
Does this provide the license or just the training?
They, they will have their permit and the license when they're finished.
Should they take them through to the license?
It does. They, um, do their permit early on and then they do all the coursework and the training, or the driving piece.
And they would take a, uh, a certificate or something to the MBA and then actually get it?
Yes, yes. Um, we've had, we have seven people enrolled in the course.
That's awesome.
Uh, we've had several other people inquiries that they're interested, but they're working at the time. So we're still doing eligibility on those individuals and if there's a way we can provide them and connect them to a traditional CDLA training course, we'll do that as well.
And this is now a state or federal requirement to take training prior to getting their license? I think that just kicked in.
Yes, yeah, I believe it's federal.
They have to have that training course before they can apply for a CDL.
It, it's kinda like the motorcycle license, if you get your motorcycle license without the training, your insurance is much higher. So this is kinda somewhere you get the proper training.
So there are some exempt entities, um, government is exempt, I think they're looking at it for, um, public safety as well. Um, what they're gonna do with that, the transition.
I come to price for the seventh through twelfth student is more than the one through six.
It gets less expensive, a second instructor.
That was like, it's obvious, I know.
I think we moved out to Halter Road and started six in the morning.
And a good, I mean, so.
The price that you see per student is, is very similar to what we would pay typically if we were engaging services through the Community College.
Seems like a good use of ARPA money, you know, the impact.
I'll make the motion the board of commissioners award a contract for the CCWD CDL dash A training course to Carroll Community College in the base amount of thirty-one thousand and up to sixty-two thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second.
I got a motion, I got a second. Any discussion on this?
Well, thanks for the pause you keep for what's going on in the community and the needs of our industry and this is a direct indication of that.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much, ladies.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Jack for being the backbone back there, okay.
Just make, make sure the students know not to use the jake breaks, cause that's a noise ordinance violation.
I get that call a lot on Woodbine Road.
Proposed contractual position, emergency communications, fiscal office technician. Gentlemen, good morning.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Commissioners, we're here today with a proposal to create a contractual position that would support Jack's, uh, operations, the emergency communications operations. As you know, they're located, uh, primary location is in New Windsor. Uh, I'll just simply a brief overview. The proposal is to take two existing pins, two existing contractual positions, combine them so they, it actually would be, um, budget neutral and actually be fewer hours than what the two individual pins are currently budgeted for. They're currently fourteen apiece, would be twenty-eight hours a week of work, the proposal was for twenty-four. But to redefine it to provide the, as noted, the fiscal and office support that currently is either, uh, less than what it used to be when it comes to the off support or when it comes to the fiscal support. The position, this, uh, Jack's operations has never had someone to address the fiscal aspects. It's always been, uh, included with or, uh, addressed when the opportunity came with someone else, uh, on his staff. So with that, um, the brief speak for itself, uh, Jack's operations, the primary emergency communications center, our primary nine-one-one, uh, answering and fire rescue EMS, law enforcement dispatch operations move to its current primary site in New Windsor in, uh, actually the spring of twenty thirteen went live mid-June of twenty thirteen. So that gives you a, a timeline as to how long it's been since they've had someone working with them as far as the office side. And as I said earlier, they've never had the, the proposed fiscal support. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to, uh, to Mr. Brown and he can speak to, uh, types of things, duties, tasks, benefits of the proposed position as, as it's presented.
Good morning, again, um, we're, we're looking for this position to provide some, some fiscal support with dealing with the Maryland nine-one-one board. Um, with the, with the number of awards that, that we get from the nine-one-one board, um, finding the time to, um, fit in the reimbursements, um, in a timely fashion, uh, with, with the other related duties, um, can be, um, troubling sometimes. So we're looking for that, for that type of support, along with coordinating with, um, uh, purchasing for procurement items, um, preparing the reimbursement requests, um, working with grants. Every award we get goes through our grants office, so there's, um, work with Debbie Standford and her group. And then the, the necessary, um, documentation through the accounting office. So it's a, it's a, it's a multi-step process to, to request these types of reimbursements. Um, and then, uh, the other would just be performing, uh, some other limited administrative tasks, um, throughout the depart, throughout our agency as available. So the, the intent would be a, a four, um, four-day-a-week, six-hour-a-day type of, um, type of position.
I appreciate the initiative you took in consolidating this down to be facing more efficient. And even though it's in my district, I think it'd be best if Mr. Wance took, removed the motion on this, it's his background.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wance.
I think it's pretty standard, I mean, I, my, uh, the contractual positions, Jack, remind us of what they are again, cause I'm not sure everybody is familiar with those, just.
Currently, we're authorized for seven contractual positions. Uh, the contractual positions are emergency communications technician positions. So they are, uh, nine-one-one call taker and fire dispatch type positions. Uh, currently, five of those positions are filled. Um, we don't hire, it, it's, it's difficult for us to hire untrained individuals to fill these contractual positions. So these two positions haven't been filled in, in many years. Um, the, the five that we have now, um, are, are, are filled and those, those individuals are working. So typically what these positions are for is when individuals leave full-time employment for another job and want to come back part-time. We've seen a decline in that type of interest as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, obviously they can find other employment with, with other, um, higher salaries than, than what, what this position offers. So, you know, in a, in an effort to streamline these, um, all this fiscal responsibility with the board, um, you know, this, this, this was the, the best way we could find to stay budget neutral and, and get this work done in a, in a timely fashion.
Plus they'd have the joy of working with you.
That's right.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it's a good move, I think it makes sense and I appreciate the fact that you're kinda thinking outside of the, the realm of responsibility here.
This also takes into account a little bit of continuity of operations.
Exactly, yeah.
My other, my assistant manager, she's got her own, uh, responsibilities, as much as I try to get her involved in this, you know, that just takes her away from more of her responsibilities. So, you know, if something should happen, then, you know, there will be someone else there that can, that can manage these types of, um, activities.
How many hours a week, again, on this one?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four.
Commissioners, I have to add, since he mentioned as far as if he's not around, he noted that today's his twenty-eighth anniversary working for the county.
Just thank you.
I think is admirable.
Thank you. Where's the cake?
That's right, where's the cake?
You started when you were thirty-five?
I'm sorry?
Nothing.
Wow. All right, I'm gonna make the motion that we approve the emergency communications fiscal office technician contractual position as at has it's been presented.
Second.
I got a motion, the second, any further discussion?
I just think it's great that one of our commissioners has a thorough, in-depth understanding of what you all do in that department.
I think, I think it's great too.
I don't know how in-depth it is.
Sorry, talking about him.
Well, you worked in there, you handled those calls, it was high stress.
We're trying to keep you all informed as to.
I, I was one of those contractuals for about twelve years and, uh, I know the benefits of those positions, so, uh, it makes, it, it helps make, uh, those, that, that center work and, you know, they, they do a good job over there, so.
Thank you.
Okay, any further discussion, seen here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, commissioners.
Well done.
Thank you. Okay, let's talk about Sunset Drive and Lake Circle Drive water main improvements.
Now it gets fun.
Andy, Kara, good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with Bureau of Utilities requests your approval to award the contract for the construction of the Sunset Drive and Lake Circle Drive Water Main Improvements Project to Mid-Atlantic Utilities of Boiling Springs, PA, in the amount of five hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars. Commissioners, on January twenty-first, the Office of Procurement advertised the project in a request for bid. We received six bids, which are listed in the order of lowest to highest. You will see the lowest bidder is marked non-responsive. The bid required the contractors to be pre-qualified for the work to be performed based on the specifications. The lowest bidder did not meet this requirement. They were marked non-responsive and they were notified. Therefore, the decision was made to award the contract to the next lowest responsive bidder who did meet those qualifications, which was Mid-Atlantic Utilities.
Gentlemen, more, more, for more background information, uh, Sunset Drive and Lake Circle Drive are both located within Carroll Highlands and the Freedom Service area and they were constructed in the early nineteen seventies. There are two major, uh, components of, of this project. The first is the trenchless installation of four hundred eighty linear feet of ten-inch diameter water main under a stream crossing and a culvert on Sunset Drive. This improvement will, will complete a loop on Sunset Drive and will, will result in an improved fire suppression response as well as enhanced water quality to the adjacent property owners. Basically, what, what happens right now is, i- i- is the water service on Sunset dead ends of both sides of, of the stream crossing. The, uh, dead ends leads, leads to water stagnation issues, as you've heard me talk about, talk about in previous, uh, open session agenda items. The, uh, second part of the project is, is replacing one thousand and eighty linear feet of aged and undersized six-inch diameter water main on Lake Circle Drive with an eight-inch diameter water main that meets current standards. Basically, a six-inch water main is too small for, for fire suppression purposes. The eight-inch will, will meet, uh, all, all fire suppression needs. The other work that we're gonna do as part of this project is a proactive and cost-effective replacement of water service laterals to the residential properties on these roadways and the upgrade of two fire hydrants as part of the overall scope. It is estimated that the project will take no more than ninety working days to complete once underway and full water service will remain in place during the construction activity. And finally, as Carrie mentioned previously, the county did receive six bids for this project. The low bidder, Franco's, was not pre-qualified for water and sewer projects and by virtue of that failed to meet the, the requirements of the bid. Pre, pre-qualification is a proven vetting process that ensures that only experienced contractors in good standing with both the county and the state and who have the, the project experience, the equipment and, and manpower necessary to perform the scope of work are eligible to a bid on county construction projects. And I certainly do not want my, my bureau's projects to be, uh, training ground or proving ground for any, any non-pre-qualified contractors. Any questions for me?
When, yeah, about that, actually, cause this is a, I think, last week I saw another, no responsive, uh, not responsive, uh, bid. So when a contractor puts in for this and he puts a bid for it and he's not pre-qualified, do we tell them that this is what you have to do to get pre-qualified? So you can actually make bids that we'll, that we'll consider?
Yes, I mean, on, on public process itself, it's, it's clearly stated that you must be pre-qualified for the project. And on my, on, on the bid documents that we advertise, it, it not only says that you have to be pre-qualified, it tells you which categories you must be pre-qualified in.
Yeah, cause I'm, I'm, I don't know this particular bidder, whoever, but if they wanna do this work and they, or they need the work, then do the, do what's necessary to, to do the work.
Craig did contact them and explain that to them, that if, if they are truly qualified to do this type of work and they wanna bid on something in the future, the best thing to do is right now to get qual, pre-qualified right now. So in the future, they will be on that list and have that opportunity to go ahead and bid.
And the pre-qualification process is a twenty-page, uh, document that's posted on, on the county's web, website on, on under engineering and public works. And I mean, it'll take some effort to, to complete it the first time, but you can, you can be pre-qualified for a wide variety of county projects.
Do we not require them to meet that pre-qualification process before they bid? I mean, how does it, like, the cart getting fired a horse, so to speak?
It, it, uh, basically, they, they have, uh, we, we ask that they submit the pre-qualification packet two to three weeks. Uh, on, on this project, it was two weeks prior to the bid date, future ones will be three weeks. But they have to have pre-qualification approval by time of bid submission, so.
We did, we did give them a deadline that they have to be.
So they knew ahead of time.
Oh, yeah, so it was in the bid specification.
So we're very clear on it.
Yes.
Thank you.
And we did also wait the ten date, necessary date, um, for test period. So we're past that point, so there's no issue.
The work that's being done is on the very southern part of, um, Sunset, near Marriageville Two.
Yes. Relatively close to there, it, it's near the pump station, near Carroll Highlands pump station.
That's what I thought, okay. Okay, I'll move the board of commissioners award a contract for the construction of the Sunset Drive and Lake Circle Drive Water Main Improvement Project to Mid-Atlantic Utilities, amount of five hundred eighty-seven thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars.
Second.
On motion, second, any discussion on this? Seen here none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now let's talk about sanitary sewer video inspection and cleaning services.
The Office of Procurement in cooperation with Bureau of Utilities requests your approval to award three separate contracts for sanitary sewer video inspection and cleaning services to standard pipe services for the Winfield and Pleasant Valley areas in the amount of thirty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. Humphrey and Sun for the Sykesville area in the amount of sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. And AM Liner East for the Hampstead area for eighty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents. All of these vendors are approved on our term contract list, which was previously competitively, competitively bid. Therefore, the amounts are within the adopted budget and no additional funds will be necessary.
Gentlemen, this is a new item, that, a, a new type of project that we haven't talked about previously. Uh, video inspection and cleaning services for our sanitary sewer mains is a much-needed and important task that the Bureau has been planning over the past several years and is now moving forward with in an effort to identify and correct inflow and infiltration problems and to clean sewage buildup on sanitary mains. The, the, the excess groundwater that we experience in many areas overextends our pumping station equipment, as well as our wastewater treatment operations at the plants. As Carrie said, in twenty-twenty-one, the county, the county solicited for these services and awarded term contracts to three vendors. Approval of this agenda item awards video inspection and cleaning services in, in three separate problem areas, one to each of these vendors. Part of this process i- is also for my staff to identify the strengths and the weaknesses of each of these vendors and, and to use this for, for planning of future projects, obviously. The, uh, the, the, the Winfield and Pleasant Valley contract is for a combined total of four thousand linear feet of sewer main inspection and light cleaning. The Sykesville area contract is for approximately nine thousand feet of sewer main in two separate areas, the Sandusky Road area and the Spout Hill Road area. And Hampstead area contract is for approximately ten thousand, six hundred linear feet on two major sewage lines that feed into the Shiloh Pump Station. And Shiloh does experience some major I-N-I flow issues. And as per the briefing paper, the, the repair of any major problems that are identified by these contracts are outside of the scope of work and will be addressed separately.
Mr. Burke, will we have to read off each one of these individually, like, one, two, and three separately?
Uh, you can read them all as a group.
Well, I figured we could divide up ones and mine and divide it up. Well, I move that the Board of Commissioners award contracts for the sanitary sewer video inspection and clean services to Standard Pipe Bank for the Winfield and Pleasant Valley areas, amount of thirty-five thousand, four hundred dollars. Humphrey and Sons for Sykesville area in amount of sixty-seven thousand, three hundred and fifty. And AM Liner East for the Hampstead area in amount of eighty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and sixty-four cents.
So. I motion second, any discussion on this? Seen here?
Hold, hold, hold on. So significant problems identified as a result of looking at these three lines. That'll be a different company that will-
Yeah, yes.
These guys don't say, hey, there's a break and we got it, or whatever. It'll be somebody else and you'll have to rebid that.
Most likely.
Okay.
The, the, this, these contracts also allow for the cured and placed lining of, 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 of veins. It's outside of the scope, but it may be the same vendors.
Okay.
So thi- thi- this will video, basically videotape the inspection process. What I'm looking for in this is, is mainly, um, uh, joint issues that, that, that allows groundwater to enter the pipe system.
Okay.
So the, the idea is, is gonna be to seal those joints as, as we move forward to, to keep the groundwater around.
Okay.
The, the one on Sandusky and Spout Hill, I appreciate that. Great question, because it, for Miami, eight fifty-one state highway, we're working with the state on looking underneath Main Street.
Yes. In Springfield.
I apologize.
And, and Springfield Avenue as well.
Correct. And then this is just to the side of Springfield and eight fifty-one going down. Does this feed into that? I mean, there's-
It does. The big difference is the Spout Hill Sewer Main has, has been, uh, replaced approximately ten to twelve years ago. So it's not in, in as, it's not as, as aged as the Main Street and Springfield Avenue are. So we, we, we anticipate, uh, joint issues on the Spout Hill, uh, Sewer Main, but, but, but not ma- major failure or, or aged by. Uh, Main Street and Springfield are at the end of their service life.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I appreciate it. Thanks. Okay, any further discussion? Great work. Seen here? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can't wait to see the video.
Oh, that's disgusting. Wow.
Okay. I hear you don't dive into it.
Okay. Siegel Project Implementation Team update. I see Ms. Kim. I see Ted. I see others coming in.
This is the A-team.
This is, I agree. So, all of us have been working for quite some time now, um, to, uh, prior, even prior to the Siegel study, to gather the information necessary to, um, provide to the board, um, you know, in preparation for the Siegel study. And then they, um, everyone here has been working to shepherd, um, all the information to Siegel and discuss everything, um, you know, with Siegel. Um, and, um- We're having technical difficulties. Um-
No, it's just my inadequacy.
Anyway, um, so as we said last week, after, um, Siegel was done presenting the first portion of their presentation, uh, the organizational effectiveness or design, as we've been calling it, um, portion, that we would be, uh, before you this week to sort of summarize, um, not that you need to, that summarize, but it'd be very briefly summarized, um, and then reviewed as to, uh, where we, um, at least preliminarily are and where we think we're going. We will be back before you on several other occasions, um, to give you, um, more information as, as things become more refined.
I was afraid that you didn't see enough of me last week. Better come back.
And Ted's been nominated as the spokesperson for the group, poor thing.
Yeah. Now, I sometimes go by the name Zaleski. But, uh, you know, not too long ago, when I was being introduced for that Mako Award, I was turned into Zalinski. And now the Baltimore Sun apparently thinks my name is Zalinski. So, I'm about ready to just give it up and- Say what you have, what you have to do.
So to, to Madle- oh, Madle-
Well, actually, the name Zalinski is very highly thought of right now. So, you know, just saying, you're right there.
You, you have less stress, though.
To, to, um, to Madison's, uh, defense, the reporter who covers Carroll County, um, when we reached out to her about the error, she said that, uh, that some editor, wherever the editorial staff is nowadays for the Baltimore Sun and, and the conglomerate of newspapers that, um, that is, um, actually renamed Mr. Zaleski. Not, she knew his name.
President.
Okay, whoever you are, just keep going.
Okay, so, uh, as Roberta said, the group here is who's been kind of shepherding this product, project, and that includes Roberta and me and Kim and Tiffany. Now, she told me how to say her last name. I didn't know this until Tiffany Stefan, right? And Lori Hirstetter and, of course, Deb and Robin, you see with some frequency. Okay, so, um, so Roberta said this is part of what's gonna be a continuing conversation with us over some number of months. And today, we wanna look back at the first Siegel report that you heard last week, start talking about the second Siegel report, which will be coming some months from now, talk about the budget process and how these two things are gonna have to come together, and then look to eventual implementation of whatever is gonna come out of this. So our goals for today, we wanna review what you've heard, we wanna start talking about what's ahead of us, think about this process, and begin thinking about what are we gonna do with this? So the first Siegel report. I might have said this last time, but I wanna say it again, not just for you, but for others who might be listening. I think the biggest thing that can get in the way for us on starting to talk about what is in here is people getting bogged down in the specifics and the details of what's in there. There's a lot of stuff. There's a lot of things you could disagree with. There are things in there that I would say, I don't agree with what they're saying there. But that's really not the point. It's the, the big ideas here is what we're concerned about. What things do we want to change about the organization? Where are we trying to go? And how are we gonna go about doing that? So Siegel and their report divided this up into four big topics. I'm gonna approach it the same way for looking back to what you heard from Siegel. First was vision and strategy. And what's on the screen now is a quote from their, their summary. Now, the bolding on transformational changes i- is mine. They didn't put that there. I put it there because I wanna, I wanna focus on that. This is not about tweaking the organization. This is not about a nudge here and a pull here. This is about rethinking how are we gonna do things. And this goes back to some of those big ideas we've been talking about. We've had a lot of change over decades. This last decade, decade has been a significant amount of change, even, even across all those other times. And we are at a point now where I believe we need to rethink things and say, how do we set ourselves up to continue providing the services we're here to do? So we talk about transfer, transformational change. And the idea of a, a vision and strategic plan. What we're really talking about here is how are we gonna go about making the choices in front of us? Now, Commissioner Rothstein likes to talk about time, people, and money. And that's very relevant to what we're looking, be looking at here. We're gonna be making an investment of time. We've already made a big investment of, of time, but there's a lot more ahead of us and with more people than just us. How are we gonna choose where to spend our time? We're gonna have people involved. We're gonna be talking about positions. How are we gonna make those choices? What people? What are we gonna do with them? And we're gonna be looking to use money. How are we gonna make those choices? How do we know that the funding is more important to go here than it is here? Because we're gonna have lots of places where we can make a case, a good case for both of these things. What is the priority, though? And that's gotta be tied to, what, what are we trying to do? What is the goal? What is that shared vision? The next area was workforce challenges. And this is really the thing we've been talking the most about, workforce challenges. They, that we're losing people and we're having trouble getting people. So here's their quote. They talk, significant succession and staffing challenges. We're losing people. And you heard all the information on potential retirements ahead, ahead of us. There's a, we could have a, a wave of water not coming our way, but moving away from us, taking a lot of people with them. And they're gonna be taking knowledge with them. How do we ensure the transfer of that knowledge from the people who are leaving us to the people who are gonna be here trying to continue providing those services? And then they talk about barriers to recruiting and retention. We can't make the barriers go away, but there's things we can do to try and put ourselves in a better position to attract people to come here and, once they're here, for this to be a place they wanna be. Now, Siegel talked about the need for a changing role for human resources in this idea of dealing with these workforce challenges. And you might remember, they had a slide with two pyramids on it, and they were talking about three functions of, of HR, administrative, consultative, and strategic. And their big point was HR's handle, handling the administrative and consultative, but is not playing a big enough role in the strategic. So that's something we're gonna be want, wanting to look at. And when we talk about strategic, what are we talking about? Talent sourcing. Where are we gonna find the people? Pipeline development. We wanna create a line of people who wanna come here. And Siegel talked about the employee value proposition. How do we make ourselves a place that people look and say, yes, I wanna go work there? Workforce and succession planning. Now, I said this on, on the previous slide, but you, we know people are gonna be leaving, and we know we're gonna have to replace them. How do we begin not just reacting to somebody is leaving, but planning ahead for what? What are we gonna do when that happens? How are we gonna make these, these changes? And leadership development. And this isn't just about getting the job done. It's also about the people who are making sure that the job gets done. How do we develop leaders within the organization? Now, sometimes we're gonna find them outside. But we, we need a better way to say, how do we take the people we have here? How do we identify our future leaders? And how do we give them what they need, so when the time comes, they're ready to, to step in? Now, we talk about this greater role for HR in the strategic part of this planning. But it's important we acknowledge that HR can't do this by themselves. Somebody in the organization has to be the lead for this. But it's not like we could say, here, Kim, go do this. This is an organization-wide problem, an organization-wide effort, and it's gonna take everybody to be involved in this. HR can't just say, okay, make this happen. We're also gonna need to talk about what investment are we willing to make in this? We know, I'll say we know, maybe we, we don't. I, I, I know. We can't simply say to HR, okay, you need to expand your role here. The reality we're dealing with is the other two pieces are already taking their time. If we want more to happen, we have to say, what are we gonna need to make that happen? And also, step off this path a little bit. I just wanna make sure you understand that, uh, neither HR nor all of us are just sitting around waiting for the Siegel study to be complete. There's a lot of things already underway. There are things that, uh, we're anticipating changes we're gonna need to make, make, trying to get things prepared, trying to make sure we have understanding. There are things that we can already work on to change. And there's a long list of things we could talk about. I'm not gonna take up your time to do that today, but I just wanna point out one example to, you know, get you thinking about this. Uh, we're working on our new human resources information system. It's called Vista. And, uh, this is a project that we've been working at for a while, is well underway, but still has s- some time to go. But this pulls together human resources and informa- information technology, and it's gonna be a way to address some of the concerns we have on how do we make some of these other things happen. Their next area was structure and staffing. Now, on the idea of structure, I think Siegel kind of said, there are things you can do, but this probably isn't where your focus needs to be today. You have other things that you need to get in place first. And, but this can be a kind of feel-good place to go. Uh, I can't tell you how many boards and commissioners I've seen come in, and first thing that they wanna do is reorganize government. And you have, it's like, okay, we wanna go in, we wanna do something, let's move these pieces around. We're gonna make it better. You know, did it make it better? You know, maybe, maybe not. But you felt like you did something. A lot of the things we're tackling here are not as neat as, as that. And with some of them, we're not gonna see the results. It's not like we can make a change and a week later, we can say, okay, what happened? And this is, this is gonna be a long process for us. But when we talk about staffing, that is an integral part of what we're all talking about here. And again, we could spend a lot of time talking about details. I'm, I'm not gonna do that today, but just give you one example to say, how do we need to start thinking differently about things? You know, one thing we've talked about is, as we look ahead to how do we do things differently, are there opportunities for us to share positions in different ways? And even to go so far as to say, share positions across a department boundary. You know, so maybe Public Works has a need that doesn't really need a whole position. And seems like an unlikely combination, but maybe Human Resources has a need that doesn't really need a whole position. Can we create a position that serves both of those to meet the need we have without doting more resources than, than we need to? And when I propose an idea like that, you know, people listening are immediately gonna say, no, no, you can't do that. I can't have my employee working over there part of the time, and an employee can't have two bosses. And there's gonna be all rea- all kind of reasons to say, no, that won't work. Uh, I'm just bringing this up to say, I think we need to consider things that might feel like, no, that won't work, and say, well, can we find a way to make this work? Because we know, as we try and move toward implementation, there's gonna be more that we believe we should do than we're gonna be able to do. So we're gonna have to make choices. And sometimes, doing it a different way might give us a little bit more room to make choices that are gonna make sense for us. Then the last piece for Siegel was infrastructure and technology. And basically, they're saying, you have challenges in front of you. And one of the things they said, you know, before you start thinking about tweaking the organization, you need to think about how technology integrates into what you're trying to get done. And we're back on vision and goals. This is another place where we need to think big. As an organization, how do we want to, how do we need to use technology to get done the things that we're trying to get do? Get, trying to get do. That's, that's very eloquent. Trying to get done. They're, they're hoping to bring me along. But we, we, we need to have an organization-wide perspective. And I know you all have seen it, maybe not thought about it, but we- But we do a lot where a piece of the organization is coming to you and saying, hey, we've got a great idea. There's this technology solution that's going to be able to help us. And it usually is a great idea and a good thing to do. But the problem is we're doing that piece by piece throughout the organization. And we're not always thinking about how does this all fit together? And then that also runs into what are our priorities for spending our time and people and money in, in technology? And I know you've seen this as well. There are projects that have been sitting for a long time. And sometimes you'll say, what's going on with that project? And the answer is nothing or not much. And the reason is because other things keep moving in front of it. Now I, I have one that, you know, touches me very directly. We came, I don't even remember what board it was. We came to a board of commissioners at some point. And wanted to get this software called Open Gov. It's a way of putting all your financial information online in a very accessible way. Anybody can go in and not just see numbers, but can play around. I want to see these combinations of, of things. This actually, this actually goes back to Commissioner Robin Fraser wanting people to be able to see where we're paying our, our money, which would have been a part, part of this. But it ended up being much more than that. We got it. We, we have the licenses. We started implementation, but we've never been able to finish it because we don't have the resources to put the time into, to getting it there. We budgeted for a new collections system years ago. It has not moved yet because other things have been the, the priority. It's not that it's not needed. And if you've got Rob and Jenny back in here, they would tell you how, how much they want that to happen. The, the problem is we just don't have enough people and time to get all these projects done. And part of this, I think, is being clearer with ourselves. What is more important than, than what? And sometimes that might mean, yes, good idea, but that's not happening now because we need to make sure this other thing happens. Oh yeah. So, and then, um, you know, on our department of information technology, similar to what I was saying with, with human resources, we can't simply say to them, go, go fix this. This is bigger than, than them. They can't determine what we think organizationally are our highest priorities. Certainly there should be a role for it, but it can't just be in their hands. And if we want more things to move faster, you can't move faster with the people who are already maxed out. You'd have to say, are we willing to put more into this? And if the answer to that is no, then we need to be clear about the implications of that. It's going to move as fast as it is. Now looking ahead to the second Siegel report. Remember this is about compensation and classification. So the first part, as Roberta said, we've been calling, um, organization design. Siegel referred to as organizational effectiveness. But we're talking about the same things, you know, how are you put together? How do you go about delivering services? This is now about the positions and how we pay the people in those positions. And this is horribly complicated. We've been through some very long conversations trying to understand things and figure out things and say, if this, then, then what? But I want you to think about this in a very simple way, at this point at least. This is about recruitment and retention. How do we get people to come work here? And once we get them, how do we get them to, to stay here? Now in doing this, we need to look at the market around us. And this has become a bigger deal. We've talked about this, you know, ear, earlier in the year. We're finding ourselves competing in ways different from what we, we did in the past. And we just can't ignore it. When we look at the market though, we need to consider both, how do we compare to people out there? But then we have to think about the positions we have inside. If you react to the market for one position and do something about it. We have other positions that we think classification wise are equivalent inside. Now we've created a different problem. We fixed one, but created a different one. And there's no easy answer to that, but we have to be aware of it. And we have to be balancing, how do we react to the outside? And how do we make things work internally? There's no one thing that attacks everything. And again, we're going to have to weigh, weigh out those things. You know, is this important? Is this more important to address than this one? If it is, how much? Are we willing to do nothing over here in order to do everything over here? Or do we have to do some, some balance? We're not going to find any easy answers to that, but it's the process we're going to have to work through. And this is another one where there's a long list of things we could talk about. And I'm not going to do that now, but just to get you thinking about some of the other things in the mix. You say recruitment and retention. But the things we're going to be dealing with are all the pieces that address recruitment and retention. The, the obvious one is going to be moving the scales. But then we also have to think about if we move the scales, are we going to place people differently? People are already here. Are we going to place them differently on the scales? We'll have career ladders to talk about. That comes into the picture for us too on retention. And we probably could fill a page with a list of the pieces that impact recruitment and retention. Okay. So I already said, there's no right answer, but there's going to be lots of options. There are going to be lots of ways we can go about doing this. And this group will be continuing to work to try and define, refine, organize those options so that we can come back to you. And among the things I think we're going to be saying is here's where we believe we can have the greatest impact. Here's where we believe we can get the most impact for the least use of our resources. Here's the things that can be implemented easily. So we're not going to be looking to just set a menu in front of you and say, pick five. We're going to be coming back to you saying, we've sorted through this. And here are the ways we think we could best attack the problems we're trying to solve. Now Siegel's work will be done at the end of June. So we'll be expecting a report in early July. Yeah, it's possible that we'll get the report on the 24th, not the 31st. But at this point, we're not pushing for that to happen any further. We're much more interested in let's get as much out of this as we can than gaining a, a week or three days. Now it's possible, in fact, I'd say even probable that between now and July, we're going to be talking to you. And Robert talked about coming back some other times. There's no schedule set, but I fully expect that there'll be some series of conversations. As we look at some things, as we figure out some things, as we feel like we can put some stuff in front of you to say, here's a possible path. Give this some thought as we move toward making those implementation decisions. Then we have our budget process. Now we're going to face all the usual challenges of the budget process. Nothing has gone a, away. All this does is add one more complication to the things that we're going to be working through. And a really big complication is we're going to need to appropriate some money. And they have FY23 budget without knowing what we're going to do with it yet. Not in a specific way. So that when we get to 23 and we do begin making decisions on implementation, the money is there to be able to, to do it. So, um, next week, sorry, no. 22nd, we'll be coming to you with, with recommended budget. And we will come to you with a recommended number for this purpose. And of course we can talk about it when we get there. We're spending a good bit of time trying to think through this because it's, it's just hard to know what the number is when there are so many variables and so many unanswered questions. You know, in a very large way, what I want to have happen is there's enough money there for you to be able to take the actions that you're saying that you want to take. But you know, we face a lot of other challenges. So everything we put here is not available for something else. So one more place of tension between how much do we do here versus what do we do over here? And then another piece of eventual implementation and what we'll have to think about as we go through the budget process. Now I've talked about what resources are going to be willing to devote to making these things happen. Now across the organization, and you've heard me talk about this many times, probably tired to death of hearing me talk about it. But we're facing pressures all across the organization. There's hardly any place I couldn't go and say, I can make a good case for another position or two or three in, in this area. Those are not the positions I'm talking about here though. The positions I'm talking about here are the ones that are going to make this whole process go. And we talked about HR taking a larger role in the strategic part of where we go from here. If we want that to happen, they have no capacity to simply do that. And there's nothing else that they can give up. So we, we'd have to say, we're going to have to devote more resources. If there are things we want to happen on, have happen on the technology side, I don't believe there's capacity there to take on more. So we would have to make decisions to say, what more do we want them to have so that we can accomplish what? Then the one specific position that has gotten talked about is the deputy administrator. And I'll, I mentioned that last time and I'll make the same case here today. I believe that position is critical to this effort happening. Because one person doesn't have enough time to just watch the day-to-day stuff and try to take the big look forward and say, how do we get from here to there? Now implementation, so we're looking forward now. We're in fiscal year 23. You have an adopted budget. You've set aside some money to be able to act on these things. For me, everything we're talking about is leading to that point. We're ready to say, what are we going to do? What are the changes we're going to make? What are the decisions? And it'd be nice for me to be able to say, okay, I can lay that out for you right now, but I can't. There's going to be a lot for us to think about. And we're going to have to choose this way or that way over and over again. So it's hard to predict where we're going to end up. We're going to need a process for saying, how do we want to match those actions to the budget? And we're going to need a process to say, how do we match those actions to whatever priorities we've established? And whatever goals we've established. And way back at the beginning of this, when we were first talking about putting out the RFP and we were talking about why do we need to do this? I made a comment to you that I see this as a once in a generation opportunity. Now I've been here for a while and we've not tried to do something like this before. I don't know how long it'll be before we, we do it again. I, I, I think we need to do whatever we can to take advantage of this opportunity and get the most out of this that we can. Again, with that idea of how do we set ourselves up to be in a strong position to continue providing the services that people expect? Whoops, kind of fell behind here. So back to the beginning. Whoops. That was really back to the beginning. Let there be light. Okay.
Let's not go that far back.
We know our challenges. And when we talked before the Siegel presentation the other day, I said, we, we didn't hire Siegel to tell us what our problems were. You know, we, we knew what our problems were. This is, this is about getting a handle on it and figuring out what are you going to do about it? And we are getting a better handle on it. And really even going back before Siegel, this, this group has been meeting for about two years, trying to figure out a lot of, a lot of these things. And in part that work is what led to saying, we need, we need some more help to get this done. So this is, this is, I don't want to say a first step because we've been through everything to here. But for me, this is kind of a first step on now starting to really think about what are we going to do? And what's that going to look like? What are our priorities going to be? And then this is also a first step in the sense that there's going to be a continuing discussion here. We'll be back some number of times to be talking about this. There'll be some weaving together of these kinds of discussions and what we're going to be doing in the budget. Leading us to at some point, that organization change that we're talking about. Okay. So that's, that's what we had to share with you today. It could be that others might want to add something, or if you guys have comments or, or questions, uh, we can go wherever you would like.
Comments?
I want to start out by stating that we've mentioned before, like different things we do that leave our legacy. I think most important of all about this is Director Zaleski, you're leaving a legacy with this. You've seen this for many years. And now we have a prime opportunity to address this. I like the fact you're bringing your knowledge to the table with the administrative science of this. And I'm thoroughly ecstatic over putting together our project management team. Cause this is a big lift, just like doing a construction site. You have to have a team together to do it. Mentioned strategy and vision. That's tremendous as well, because if we have that, then we're not reactionary. I think what's taking place now is the county government seems more reactionary to everything coming at it. Cause we don't have that strategy. And taking the opportunity now to plan ahead, to get some budgeting in place before we actually go into it, I think is great. And whatever you guys want, I'm more than happy to supply you with.
Okay. Anything else? I, I'll tell you, I personally, I think we do have a strategy and I do believe we have a vision. We need to codify it. We need to continue to develop it. We've been working this for quite some time. The three of you gentlemen have been doing this almost going on eight years. And I applaud that. We run the budget from this dais. We don't delegate it to anyone. And we take that, like you said, and you provide us the information. Using the word priority is very important to me. I mean, everything you said is very important. We've got to ensure that we tie resources to the priorities, or else they will not become priorities. Time, people and money. So every time we talk about something, what is it going to take to do that something? And that is a priority. If it's not, it becomes a dream. And, uh, you know, we're, we're not willing to tie time, people and money. So I do appreciate that. You know, uh, I've been there a long time, not in, you know, civilian clothes, but a long time. And they say wisdom is the combination of academia and experience. You know, I've got a couple of masters in HR and strategic resource management. So I really do applaud everything you're saying. But I believe wisdom is really scar tissue is. And I think at least I can speak for a few of us up here have a lot of scar tissue with decades of service. Taking that and applying it to what we're doing. Big ideas don't come very often. I think the big idea that this county has established honestly is to fire EMS. That was the, the big idea that has come to the forefront and how we're creating this new fire EMS to serve our community. Cause our priority is to the community. There's very few big ideas that really get the resources necessary. So I don't think we should be looking for those big ideas. I think what we should be looking for is if you think of the jar with three or four rocks, you know, those smaller rocks and how to put them in there. Cause that's where we're going to have room to put, the, the big rocks are there. We have a set budget of 496 million, whatever it is today. We have our directors, we have our manpower. Things can be shuffled around, but tho, those are like the, the big ideas. I think, uh, I appreciate you saying think big, cause we need to. And we need to think big on how we're taking care of our community. And our financial responsibilities. I also appreciate the, the word undertow. I'm, I'm visual when you say things like that. Because it's not a tsunami. It's not like we're being hit by something. No, it's, we're being pulled away. We're, our resources, our, our money is being taken away from us, you know? Cause we only have so much in the budget. So how are we going to build that budget? Everybody says, well, pay people more or I want turf fields. Or why isn't the substation being built in Eldersburg? Cause that was discussed last night at the town hall. Those are all great ideas, like you said, but that undertow. So how are we going to bring back, you know, to the beach? People don't want to talk about taxes, but there's only so many ways we can get money. And I'm not willing to talk about taxes during the budget this session because it's post pandemic is very, very difficult. But you know that, you know, so we all, we have a set amount of money. But, but I, I, I visualize that undertow in so many ways. So that does a really good comment you used. You know, the other comment I, I wrote down here, uh, water balloon, you know? It's like taking a water balloon, you squeeze it over here and you fill over here. And then all of a sudden it expands over there. Now you gotta deal with it over there, you fill. And that's kind of where we're at right now is how do we? Is how do we build it so we're, we're doing it holistically and not piecemealing? So, uh, no, a lot of, a lot of work was done, a lot of work to be done. I look forward to having these candid conversations. As Commissioner Lance and others have said, in open session, transparent because during the town hall, I get those comments, you know, having the ability to reach out. And say, and I asked them, I said, what are your requirements? What are your priorities? And how do we bring them to the table? So, uh, I, I do applaud all the work that's being done openly. Yeah, we have a lot of work to do. It's, uh, it's definitely not insurmountable and we can, we can get it done. I think we need to do it during this, you know, team, you know, so we can provide insight and candid thoughts to the next team coming in, in December. But, uh, you know, it doesn't mean I, we can't do it, I mean, so. Yeah, those are a few, I tell ya, scar tissue means a lot. And so using your, um, skillset and your experience goes a long ways. Roberta and Tim and others, we have such as, and Kim, before you get out of here, we have such a seasoned team that that scar tissue means a lot going to the next level. Especially when we could be candid about these conversations. That's what we really need to get to, so. Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at. Any, any thoughts? Oh, I can go on, I mean, this, this is, this is my bread and butter, I love strategic management. I mean, I, organization design, I mean, people may call me immature about things, this is where it's at. And I really appreciate it, uh, so, we're gonna get there.
Go ahead, Steve. You look like you're getting ready to.
Well, I, I was, I mean, I, you've settled, most of what you said is exactly what I would say. You know, the, one of the most important things that I think is, is essential here moving forward is, and I wanna be careful how I say this, but there, there are three of us here that have, that have been through a decision of, alright, well, as you alluded to Ted, you know, when a new board of commissioners comes in, well, let's, let's take this and, let's, let's do that. And we did that. We, we, we did, we did that early into our first, you know, our, in the first, what, year, I guess?
It worked out great.
So, been there, done that. But I think that leads to a point that you made about how I truly believe that we've gotta really dive in and really do the hard work on this because this is the group that needs to do it because the experience is here. When you get a, when you get another group of folks that are brand new, and let's be clear, it, it appears as if they're gonna be four brand new ones here. I don't know how you'd accomplish some of this because the knowledge level that they're gonna have as to how this place works is not going to be there. I don't care what anybody says in a campaign, you know, we're gonna come in and we're gonna manage the mon, I love the one about, well, we're gonna manage the money better. Okay, well, good luck with that. I, I remember back in twenty twelve or twenty thirteen when I started running for this position, I, I probably said that myself. Well, when you get here, you're gonna rapidly forget that you said that because what you just said ain't gonna work. So, I do believe that it's important that we really dive into this with the assistance of those of you that have been working on this for a long time and, and get this done. I'm, I'm about through, I'm about halfway through the study again, reading it again. It's a lot in there. I've reached out to a couple other organizations that used Segal just to see what the results were. And I've been very, it, it's been very interesting to hear what the results were. You know, some organizations, one of the organizations I reached out to, they eliminated people and wanted to make it more, uh, smooth and a better efficient way by using technology. And about two years after they did it, they realized that eliminating those people was one of the worst things they could have done because they missed that personal touch. So there's all kinds of, of back and forth and consequences and it's not just about being reactionary here. Man, do I agree with that. It, it, it's about reading and about looking at the entire picture. Not just, we're gonna move this phone over to that desk because that's gonna be better. Well, that's not what we're doing here. So I wanna, I wanna make sure everybody knows that. You know, I love some of the comments we're getting from whoever, uh, and it just, come on. It, it's not about that, it's about changing what we do as a whole, not the little pieces of moving the folks around. So, uh, I agree with that, man, do I have some scar tissue. So, uh, but, but this group really needs to work together with all of you and we really need to get this done. And the timing here is essential. I mean, we got the budget coming up, we got a lot to do. We really do, I mean, this, this Tuesday, Thursday thing is whatever, but you know, we could do this full-time and I'm not sure we'll get it accomplished by December. We may set the stage on some of these things in order for it to be implemented over a period of time, but it, it's, it's gonna be challenging to get this work done.
Yeah.
You know, the other thing to think about is when summertime comes along, everybody says, just did the budget, now we take a break. Well, there is going to be no break this year.
I wanna applaud, I wanna applaud your humility.
So, I, that, that's my thoughts. Uh, again, I'm through, I'm about halfway, uh, in reading some of that and I'm, for me, interesting to add, you know, you liken it to what you have done your entire life and I'm liking it to some of the decisions that have been made in places that I've worked with public safety and how we changed that. You know, we added, we added some things over here so that this would make that better and it just, it's very interesting when you really read it again. So I, I hope everybody's doing that. I know that I am, you know, I just didn't listen to Segal and go, oh, okay. Man, you gotta read it. And I think the third time, I'm still gonna pick up things I missed the second time and the first time. So, agree with all of that and that, that's where I am, uh, I'm, I'm all in. Uh, I think it's gonna be very beneficial, but you know, we've, we've gotta be, we've, we've gotta be motivated to, to really jump in and do this. And not just, not just be surface reactionary, whatever it is that people throw out there.
Right.
It, we've got, it, this is, it's more than that. So, uh, that's my five cents.
I, I wish we'd have done this several years ago. Because what we're doing is developing a county improvement plan. And this isn't a one-time thing, this is an ongoing thing. Ted, you said your committee's been meeting for two years. We need to set our, I guess, priorities by each area, start working toward them. It's not gonna be a one-time, this is the way it is, whatever. It's, it's sort of like, uh, uh, just solidifying something and then remember, this is gonna change in a year or two, we may shift from that. It's a, it's a moving, uh, or momentum in this, but I think that, I'm, I'm calling it a county improvement plan because we have all these different pieces. Okay, if we improve here or make a, a chan, change, like you said, over here it affects something, how are we gonna affect this? And get back to it, ongoing. And I think this is something that we continually work on every year, your committee keeps going. And it's not from the top down, this has to be from the bottom up. I mean, from the people who are actually doing the items, they need to have a voice in this and they're asking us or telling us what they need, not what we think they need. Because, to tell you the truth, I, I wouldn't want your job, I couldn't handle it. But you can tell me what you need in that job to make it happen.
HR is fabulous. Why, I don't know, how can you say that, HR is fabulous?
You wouldn't last five minutes in that job. Anyway, um, but it has to be bottom up and it has to be a, a committee telling us what's needed. Segal was a great starting point. They're giving us, pointing out to us what we already know, but making us look at it. And I, I think the idea which you said Ted, money, money has to be allocated and we start, start working on this. It's a little bit every year, we're not gonna hit one big, hey, this is the solution. It's gonna be bit by bit, little change by little change until we get to where we need to go. And I'm not sure we ever have an ultimate goal or end goal on it, I think it's continuous from here on. And that's the way we have to approach this. I thank you guys for what you put.
County Improvement Plan, CIP, in the military, it stands for Command Inspection Program, which we always feared, but, uh.
Same principle, no matter what, how you look at it.
You know, I had a thousand folks and about three hundred and fifty million dollar budget and I always feared the CIP. Yes, it does.
We, we don't have that.
I, I like the improvement plan better than the way I see it, but Dennis.
I, I like the fact that we've put this, or contracted for the study and we're getting the results back. I just hope that we have the, the whatever it takes to implement it, to move forward with it. Because it's, I have to say, when you put decisions like this in the hands of elected officials, it can go any which way. Because we're not the experts, we all have a lot of knowledge up here, we do. Not saying that we don't, but we're not the experts, we haven't been living it like you all have, we haven't. And then, as elected official, you have the public pressure, why this, why that, and pushing you this way, that way. And it is very hard to do sometimes, to do what is, what you perceive to be the right thing when the public says, no, we, we don't wanna do that because it's gonna cost us this or that. That's where the rubber meets the road, are we gonna be able to actually do that? This study so far seems to be very good. I haven't seen the second part yet, but it seems to be very good and I, I think there's a lot of good things in this study that will move us forward as a county, I really do. But do we have what it takes to implement this study? And not just say, okay, you know, we're gonna do one or two things here because it looks really good on the surface. But the core problems that we're facing here, we're not gonna really address them because it's gonna take more than we're willing to, to wager or more than, more skin that we're willing, willing to put into the game to implement that. And that's what it's gonna come down to. I, I really believe that, hopefully, we're willing to do that. We'll wait and see if that, if that happens.
Anything else?
I like, I like the fact that Commissioner showed humility in transitioning from a candidate to actually being in this position. He is so right on that, it's a totally different world to look from the outside and then they actually sit in his seat and deal with all the pressures that come at you. So thanks for stating that and hopefully the candidates out there are watching, take note of what he said.
You know, we do, it's the, it's the military, groundbreaking with one group and then ribbon cutting with another. And that's what's gonna happen. We're doing the groundbreaking, you know? It's gonna take quite some time to continue this groundbreaking. But the ribbon cutting, the implementation like, uh, Commissioner Fager shared, that ribbon cutting, that's gonna be reliant on that next group. And I have seen projects stop in between groundbreaking and ribbon cutting because of changing priorities, you know, because funding, because, whatever. And because of the environment, that undertow, you know, happens during that time. So, uh, we, we got to, uh, I believe, continue the momentum on this process and keep it in the forefront, you know, uh, the best we can throughout the budget session, throughout the summer, and move it all the way to the last day we're in office in, on this board. So, uh, yeah, appreciate, appreciate all the work that, I know the two of you are the face of the crowd, but all that are, you know, working to make this, you know, together, so.
Just imagine, this is the best face they could come up with.
You don't want me to go there, I'm in Jersey, don't, don't, don't get me there, so.
You brought it up, so now look.
I know. Look, look how, look how red he turned. That's almost like a Burke red, I mean, you know, I just have to say that, say he turned red. Wow, the two of ya. Like Deb's sweater jacket back there, how red you are. Okay, anything else for the good of the group? Roberta?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We'll be back.
You, we're.
What, wait, what?
Okay, um, anything for, well, Chris, do we have any callers?
No, you got one more item.
We got one more item.
Alright.
Man. Oh. I apologize.
I thought you said you've done this before.
This one's the important.
I was gonna say, this one should be like, you should circle this panel this morning.
This is the most important one. Let's talk about the funding for the Carroll County Veteran Celebration. And I'm gonna pass it over to my great colleague to the left, Commissioner Weaver.
Thanks a lot. Alright. You know, we decided to look at this, uh, program and it's growing. What I thought was gonna be two thousand people showing up, I'm thinking it's gonna be more like three or four thousand as we're getting momentum built on this. It's just uncanny, I think, where it's, where it's heading. So we're gonna have quite a few thousand people, weather permitting here, I mean, this is one thing going for it. And I think we're gonna have to, you know, get the funding from the county to start moving forward. I did get a, a list from Chris Weinbrenner yesterday. We have a meeting this afternoon, yeah, on this as far as budget. And, you know, I was aiming a little low on this, but I'm gonna ask for, uh, some funds a little higher than I think I originally needed, but I'm gonna ask for fifteen thousand, uh, to go in to, uh, fund this. If we don't need it, fine, we can always, uh, be there, but I'd rather have the funding than not to get started on this. And it's taken off, unbelievable, with the enthusiasm and the, uh, push from all groups. We have, you know, there's twelve, or twelve thousand veterans in the county are buying into it. I, I know one mailing to get to the seven thousand, uh, in the middle, I can't remember the exact amount. But, you know, it's, mailings are expensive on this, but we wanna hit that thirty to sixty-year-old veteran in there and we have them listed from the census, I think it was Leslie Wagner who brought it up, uh, we have, she has the ability to do it.
Bobby did, but yeah, Bobby did.
Bobby, one of them, uh, we have the ability from the census to hit that group and get them invited here. And, you know, as, we are a model for the state and even nationally, what we do for veterans in this county. This, I hope, will give a, a boost to even that, uh, what's going on, so. I would hope the governor, uh, any response yet? I would not think, no, it's too early. But, uh, would, would show up for something of this magnitude. So, uh, I've not had any negative feedback on this whatsoever yet, so. That's what I'm asking for at the present time.
I'm a little bit unclear on what the funding's for, you're saying you need fifteen thousand to a mailing? What, what exactly?
No, no, a mailing was, say, two or three thousand, uh, to go out to hit this veterans group. We have to fund, um, a stage, a band, a stage for the band because the stage at the farm museums rotted off and they had to remove it. For the bands there, we have to fund, uh, as a whole, host a little thing.
Tentage, canopies?
Yeah, canopies, ba, uh, tents, things like that. I mean, most of these events out there take quite a bit of money.
Would we do, uh, radio advertising to, or?
We will be. All kinds of advertising, we have our, uh, marketing group meeting, which is, uh, Chris Weinbrenner and Chris Swam and we're getting media out everywhere, that is not really very costly to us. It's, it's a, uh, the physical things needed for that day out there, we just need to be able to cover. Up, is the backup band coming in, we'll have to cover that, things like this.
I think it's a wonderful thing, but I feel much more comfortable about, you know, allocating resources or we seeing some sort of budgetary structure.
Well, well, right, right now, we have the US Army Field Band scheduled, which is great. We have a static display, the helicopter work on other, uh, equipment. We have all the veteran support organizations, uh, receiving the information with the intent of, uh, attending. We have gift bags and, I don't wanna say treats, whatever, giveaways for, um, the veterans and their families. So that'll be some of the money, we're not looking aggressively for sponsors, this is a free event. And that's how we got the US Army Field Band, uh, to get in here, but it has to be a free event and should be a free event. There are seven thousand plus veterans within that sweet spot of thirty to sixty. There are seven thousand plus veterans within that sweet spot of thirty to sixty-five um that have been identified, and there will be mailings going out to them. We do have uh radio advertisement. I'll try, well, I'm gonna try, I will reach out to WBAL, um, and a couple others, just, this is a good news story, and try and get their attention. Um, yeah, this is.
It's also print ad, there's also print advertising.
Yeah, the print, there's print advertising.
Print advertising, all the flyers and other things that are associated with this.
And we do, and we do need to stage, I apologize.
Committee, co- committee's meeting, they said, we need an amount to right, a budget here. I mean, they, they're adding up all the different things that are coming in. What's it gonna be? And it's a tight thing, you know, it's some variables in this, you need a little bit of a leadway, but uh if we get X amount allocated for this, we can build within that budget.
We we have food trucks. Um, I was able to secure so far four kegs of beer, and with the intent of securing more kegs, uh, with a beer garden there, um, providing free beer for our veterans and free, like I said, uh.
That's all donated.
Yeah, that that is all donated, we're not paying for that. Um, free uh things also, like bags for them. But this is a ceiling, so if there's any issue, I'm gonna make the motion that we approve fifteen thousand dollars, or up to fifteen thousand dollars for the veterans event to be held on May fifteenth.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this?
Where, I'm sorry, go ahead.
If you need more, come back, because
We will.
Fifteen thousand dollars for a celebration like this is like a drop in the bucket.
Right.
Um, and again, Dick, you said it, you, you guys both said it, you know, doing, doing whatever we can for veterans. I mean,
Yep.
I'd, I'd throw more in it if I had to.
Right, this this is a month.
Just let it.
Thank you.
Let us know, I think this is fantastic.
Yep.
Uh, where do we pull this money from their existing budget? How do we finance this? Where does that fifteen thousand come from?
Well, there's not an answer to that question yet. This is the first time, I think, fifteen thousand has come up for my.
Correct.
But we will, if this is happening, we will figure it out.
So, so I, let me amend the motion to direct the staff to figure it out, to get us fifteen thousand. Or just authorize. You tell me.
You can say thank by the funding, or you're authorizing the funding, and I can figure it out.
So, so we'll leave the uh, we'll leave the motion as is, which is authorize the funding of up to fifteen thousand dollars for this veterans event.
Yeah, that's fine.
May fifteenth.
We'll be working out.
So I got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? There's no amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
Against?
I'm against it.
Okay, four one, for funding for the veterans event, May fifteenth, for up to fifteen thousand dollars. Now.
Now you can go to public comment.
What's that?
Now you may go to public comment.
Chris, do we have any public comment?
No one has joined us today, thank you.
I don't want public comment, then. Okay, anything for open admin?
Uh, just a reminder that we have a P and Z opening. I know that the first new person uh will be on board at that next week's meeting, which is great, he'll be joining. But we still have an opening, so we need to get that list back together so that we can look at perspective. Second, actually, there's two openings.
Yeah, there's a regular and an alternate.
Regular and an alternate, so if we can get that list, and maybe there's some new folks that come in, because the one that, remember, the one that we, the other one that we had recommended uh was identified that he can't serve.
Right.
So.
I highlight a town hall, uh, both in the afternoon and uh, or morning and evening.
Okay.
So.
We're gonna do boards and commissions next week, so.
Okay.
Okay, that's great. All right, cool.
Some note, look forward to.
I, I have one thing if no one else does.
Anything else? Open admin?
Just quickly, um, so with COVID numbers all going in the correct direction, we talked briefly last week about um room capacities and whether the board wanted to change them. He asked me to find out what the latest is in terms of CDC or Health Department guidance. Um, so the guidance today is to reduce the um separation from six feet to three feet. Um, so if the board is amenable to that, we'll, we will make all the arrangements, all the changes in all the meeting rooms, both in this office and across the, you know, county office spaces, um, to meet that room capacity.
Is the state adhering to that?
I have no idea, but that's what the um Health Department and the, and the CDC guidelines are.
I can tell you in the hearing room yesterday,
You were side by side.
Every other seat was, had a sign on it that said, can't sit here due to COVID.
So which is three feet, if it's every other seat.
So that's about three feet. So, yeah, that, whether or not that they are, but I saw that yesterday.
But if that's kinda, if they were side by side, same, do not sit, it's probably around three feet, so.
Makes sense.
So do we need a motion to make that change?
Sure, why not, just to be.
Make a motion to make the change from six feet to three feet for inside meeting rooms, is that?
Okay. I got a motion, second, anything, any discussion? Seen here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, that's it.
What about the uh, the plexiglass?
Did you say I did it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, five oh. What about plexi, the plexi?
Will this be coming down, or do we need a motion? What, I think we need guidance on that too as well, because with my hearing disability and Commissioner Weaver's, we do have a difficult problem hearing people to pour in.
Commissioner Weaver.
Commissioner Weaver, did you hear that?
Did you say something? I can't hear you, I got glass in the way.
I'm just wondering what the actual benefit of this, the plexiglass is at this point in time. So I, I wanna make a motion that we take the plexiglass dividers down.
Okay, I got a motion to take the plexi glass dividers down.
I'll second that one. I can't hear Dennis from, if he pulls back from the back.
Well, maybe you don't want it to come down.
Is that just here, or you're talking about everywhere in all the county buildings, or what are we talking about?
Uh, I guess, on all the uh.
We'll just make it here.
Well, we start here, I guess, maybe leave it to each committee, like planning, zoning, if they feel comfortable. Do we have a clarification?
That would be too complicated. Those rooms, like, oh, oh, three are used by a variety, a large variety of boards.
Then I'll modify it to move, remove all the plexiglass dividers in, or diocese.
And maintain three feet apart from each other, which we are. Okay, I have a motion, I have a second.
I'm measuring.
Okay.
So I, I'm unclear, all, everything's, because like in, where the public comes in.
The, the diocese, so.
Oh, okay, all right.
Thanks, thanks for clarifying.
Because, yeah, I'm not in favor of that. I mean, I sat in a venue last night, and I had three people coughing around me.
Okay.
A Weisenheimer. So.
Any further discussion? I got a motion, I got a second.
I have to say, before we vote, since there's discussion, I I'm not in favor of this. This isn't, I don't think, bothering anybody. I understand your problem with hearing, and I do, and I'm trying to lean forward to talk, but.
Thank you.
But I, I just, COVID is here, and it's almost gone, and I'm, thank God for that, but uh, what's next? Something else will be coming along. I don't know how much this costs, and I know we got it from federal money and so forth, but it costs something to put this up here. And I, I've just, I I just don't see the harm in keeping, in leaving it. That's just my opinion. Something else, in my opinion, will be coming along, than where, than where you don't have to go scramble to put all this stuff back up.
But the harm is not having the ability for open dialogue. That's, that's the.
Okay, if that's what you think, okay.
That's the impediment to it.
That, that's kinda where I'm leaning to.
You know, it's, it's.
Even though you can see one another, it kinda puts up.
Right, okay.
So, I, I'm in favor if it's just this and the one downstairs, but everywhere else, I am not.
Right.
I would, so, let's make sure that's clarified.
Yep.
Just the two, two hearing rooms.
The two hearing rooms.
And maintaining in accordance with CDC guidelines, three feet apart. Okay. Any further discussion? Seen here, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Against?
Yes.
Okay, four one, plexiglass will come down.
Except for this piece right here.
That one's extended.
Just saying, that's, that's, just wanna be, just wanna be clear here.
Can you, can you, can you paint it black?
Well.
Okay, is there any other open admin? Wow. Okay, so the plexiglass will come down, we will keep it in clean storage. If it does need to come back up, uh, it will be coming back up. Okay, why don't we go to calendars?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning for another four minutes.
Okay. Monday, the fourteenth, Transit Advisory Council, Commissioner Fraser will be attending uh in room zero three, Reagan Room. Tuesday, March fifteenth, will be a hybrid Planning Commission Session with Commissioner Wance attending. Veterans Advisory Meeting, Commissioner Weaver and I will be attending, and Battle of the Books up at Westminster at five thirty, is that happening?
No, that's, I think, that's the, that's the adult one, down at sixteen twenty-three.
Yeah, that's not.
So Commissioner Boucher, if you're scheduled to attend, that's it, sixteen twenty-three, the brewery.
It's not Westminster.
And I didn't.
Cause I had the wrong address before.
Yeah. Let's, yeah, let's.
Sixteen twenty-three.
Well, yeah, but let's check to make sure that that is actually happening.
It is, that's, that's it, that's it. That's fair.
Okay, then make sure you have the right address, sixteen twenty-three.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, yeah, that was, Wednesday, March sixteenth, uh, committee, Carroll Community College Board Trustees Meeting with Commissioner Wance at the Great Hall of Carroll Community College up out in Westminster. And then Commissioner Wance has the opportunity to excel, going to the ESAC, the Emergency Services Advisory Council, at seven PM that evening. Thursday, March seventeenth, Happy St. Patty's Day, we have open sessions starting at nine. Um, let's see, Legislative Update, Adult, FY twenty-three Adult Court Grant Application, FY twenty-three Macro Court ADR Grant Application, we get to see Judge Hecker. Uh, Judge Hecker stays with us for requen- requesting approval to submit Annual Year Twenty-two Courthouse Security Grant. And then DPW talks about FY twenty-three Annual Transportation Plan. Mr. Zaleski will talk about Union Mills Watershed Discussion with Mr. Heim, with Chris. Um, and then Radio Communications Items for Emergency Management. North Pump Station and Sanitary Main Replacement Project, really looking forward to that, from Andy. Replacement of Water Service Laterals in Carroll Highlands, Andy will stay with us, and he will finish up with Engineering Services for the Design of the Freedom District Water Treatment Plant Finished Water Pumps Upgrade Project. That evening is the MML, the Maryland Municipal League Quarterly Meeting, where all of us will be attending up at Manchester, uh, for St. Patty's Day. Friday, Transit Appreciation Celebration at the Westminster Riding Club, Commissioner Fraser will be attending. And then he will be attending on Saturday, the Grayson Gardner Eagle Scout Ceremony. Man, you're, you got a busy weekend, you got the podcast on the twentieth.
It's gonna roll one, one right after the other.
It does. Okay, March twenty-first, we have nothing scheduled on the twenty-second. We have uh open session with FY twenty-three uh Budget Presentation. And then Ag Center Annual Dinner Meeting.
I'll be going to that.
I'll be attending as well. And Commissioner Fraser, you're attending?
Yes.
Okay, so. So, are you attending or no?
Uh, probably, I haven't.
Okay, why don't you put all of us on it, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah.
It's easier takeoff thing, okay. Um, on Wednesday, March twenty-third, Commission of Aging and Disabilities, which is still virtual.
I don't know, have you been attending that? Because I haven't been there.
That's right, cause you have Mako stuff.
Yeah, so.
I've been attending some, so.
Okay.
Put me in that.
Yeah, why don't you take that?
At ten AM.
Yeah. Cause you've been there.
Yep.
That's consistency, keep you on there.
Yep. Wreckin' Parks Advisory Board Meeting Luncheon up at Bear Branch, and four of us are attending. Are you attending that?
No, sir, I have work obligations, thanks, though.
And then Mako Board Meeting Legislative Committee at three PM, Commissioner Fraser and Commissioner Wance will be attending. On Thursday, March twenty-fourth, Ag Conservation Work Group, Ms. Eisenberg will be presenting, and then FY twenty-three Agency Budget Hearings at one PM. So we have a morning and afternoon session, nothing on Friday. The Winfield Fire Department Banquet, Commissioner Boucher will be attending on Saturday, March twenty-sixth, and then he will be providing the podcast. Interesting, yeah, yeah, okay, podcast on March twenty-seventh. Okay, did I miss anything? Tim, did I miss anything? Are you sure?
Isn't there another significant holiday on the seventeenth of March?
Yeah, well, he mentioned that.
He mentioned it, yeah.
St. Patty's, no, you're talking about Purim?
The Feast of Purim.
Purim, yeah, it is. I get that, it is, Queen Esther, Purim, it is March seventeenth, thank you very much. I'll have my grogger out there and my humantashen, so it's all good. Okay. But thank you. Um, anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
I didn't ask for that yet.
Okay.
Something else.
Do I have a second? I have a motion and a very quiet second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Did you say aye?
No.
Oh, against?
Yes.
You can stick around.